Okay, I'd like to call to order the December 20th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand for the pledge, Ms. Frescatore. Would you please lead us in the pledge?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can I have a moment of silence for those serving our country, both at home and abroad, please? First up on tonight's agenda is announcements. Ms. Frescatore.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow supervisors, staff, and residents. I have some announcements to make on behalf of the Parks and Rec Department. Don't miss out on our craft programs with Ms. Cathy, Kids One Day Workshop for ages three to six, once a month on Tuesdays, January 8th, February 12th, from 4:30 to 6:00, $12 a class. Munchkin Time for preschoolers, ages two and three, with an adult helper, once a month on Wednesdays, January 9th, 13th, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. Fees are $9 a class. Think about discount tickets for last-minute holiday gifts. Regal movie tickets, ski lift, flower show. We also have the zoo, Camden Aquarium, Crayola, and other local attractions, some which don't expire until 2019, on sale until December 21st. Time's running out. Tickets are sold Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Parks and Rec office in Warminster Community Park. Or you can check online for ticket prices or call the office. 2019 dog licenses are available for sale at the Parks and Rec office, again, Warminster Community Park. Tickets for wine, cheese, designer bag, bingo are on sale now at the Township website or in the Parks and Rec office. The event will be held February 22nd, Ben Wilson Senior Center. Tickets are $40 a person, include wine, beer, finger food buffet. Don't miss out on this fun evening. They've been sold out for the last five years. Friends of Warminster Parks Casino Night will be on Saturday, March 23rd, at Ann's Choice. Will sell tickets and accept sponsorships through the next three months. The $35 tickets will include beef and beer, $50 in chips, gaming table raffles, and silent auction items. New this year, you can have the opportunity to bid, once in a lifetime, trips to California Wine Country, Alaskan Cruise, or safari in Africa. Tickets are available at www.friendsofwarminsterparks.org. For more information on any of these items, contact the Parks and Rec office at (215) 443-5428, or visit the Township website. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Frescatore. Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make an announcement that the Warminster YMCA is going to be having a blood drive. It's actually tomorrow, between 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. The address there, it's the studio at 626 York Road in Warminster. If you're interested, contact the front desk, or Katie@CC, this is her email, C-C-R-A-I-L at C-B-F-Y-M-C-A dot org. Please call 1-800-RED-CROSS. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Mr. McPhillips.
No, I'm out.
Thank you, Mr. McPhillips. Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to welcome two new businesses to town that joined our community over the last month. First is OP Schuman &amp; Sons. They're a custom manufacturing machining operation there at 817 Nina Way. And also just opening is Jr.'s, or JR's, JR's Jr.'s?
I think JR's.
JR's, JR's Express Car Wash at 90 York Road. They just opened, I'm seeing things on Facebook about them, I think they're giving away free car washes.
Till Sunday, I saw.
There you go. So, free car wash, 90 York Road at JR's Express Car Wash. We welcome them to town, thank them for choosing Warminster Call Home. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're gonna get a free car wash tomorrow with all the rain, but Saturday, Saturday and Sunday, go over and get a free, they did a nice-looking job on the buildings. The only announcement I have is that there's still some openings on boards and commissions, and we're still going to accept letters of interest. So, anyone out there that's interested in serving the community, and it's time out of your house and away from your home, but be very grateful, please do. Go on the website, be identified and ask, please send a letter in. I only have one other announcement, I'm gonna give it to Mr. Bartle. We had an executive session prior to tonight's meeting.
Yes, thank you. The Board discussed in executive session a potential matter of litigation, also discussed an actual matter of litigation that involved Warminster Township versus Walter and Michelle Studley, which was at number 2008-06610 in the Bucks County Court of Common Pleas. The matter had previously been heard before the zoning hearing board. That is a matter of litigation. The Board discussed those two items, both of which are legitimate matters of executive session pursuant to Pennsylvania law.
Thank you, Mr. Bartle. Next up on tonight's agenda is presentations. Item A is the Warminster Municipal Authority Update, and the chairman, or president of the Authority is Tim Haggy, he's here tonight. Thank you for coming, Tim, for the update.
Thank you. Good evening. Happy holidays. Those who celebrate Hanukkah, I hope you had a joyous Hanukkah. Merry Christmas to all. Good evening, I'm Tim Haggy. I serve as the general manager. I got downgraded from president.
From president, sorry.
Of the Warminster Township Municipal Authority. With me tonight is Joe Nolan of CKS Engineers. Joe's been our engineer for 32 years. We're here to discuss Authority operations for 2018 and some future capital projects. Secondly, we will discuss the possibility of the Warminster Authority becoming responsible for the Township's stormwater MS4 requirements. As a municipal authority, we provide three essential services. Potable water, sewer service, and fire protection service. We provide more than a billion gallons of water to our customers. Then we treat the collected wastewater from our system, combined with other municipalities, we clean it and recycle about 2 billion gallons of clean water back to the environment every year. For fire protection, we stand ready with over 6 million gallons in our seven storage tanks, and have 909 hydrants available throughout our distribution system. Water quality's been a big issue. PFOS, PFOA contamination continues in the area groundwater. PFOS and PFOA are part of a group of chemicals, now more commonly called PFAS, PFAS compounds. And they were used in firefighting activities at the NOC base and the Willow Grove base. PFAS substances continue to pollute the groundwater of all local communities, even after a decade since the last use at the NOC base. This year, at our well number two, well number two is polluted with firefighting foam chemicals. We constructed a building addition to house PFAS treatment. The United States Navy reimbursed us for this expense. While this news is encouraging, we still have 14 wells without permanent treatment systems installed to remove Department of Defense PFAS pollutants. We've been in contact with the United States Senator Casey's office, met with Representative Senator Toomey, and Congressman Fitzpatrick at various meetings in 2018. On the state level, we met with State Senator Greenleaf, and quite often, we met with Representative O'Neill and his office to seek help from the state of Pennsylvania. I can't thank them enough for their help. We're close, we think, at the board meeting, state board meeting of the Commonwealth Finance Authority in January, we have a good opportunity to get a sizable grant to help us with treatment costs. We've hired a specialist this year, specialized environmental law firm, to see financial damages from the manufacturers of A-T triple F foam. We're in our third year this year with our contract with North Wales Water Authority for water supply from the Forest Park Water Treatment Facility. The Forest Park supplies us, that facility supplies us with water at near non-detect levels, and currently supplies us with about 82% of our water supply. The remaining coming from the four wells that we have permanent PFAS treatment systems installed. At the Willow Grove base in Horsham, we installed a stormwater remediation system for PFAS contamination in cooperation with Air National Guard. We installed a water main and near the intersection of Bristol and Davisville roads, in conjunction with the United States Navy, to provide public water to North Hampton residents who had contaminated private wells. We continue to do infrastructure improvements, and Joe will talk to us now about our water main projects.
Thank you. The map on the screen over there shows the projects that have been completed in 2018. There were five water main projects that we completed totaling 29,000 linear feet of pipe, which is 5.6 miles, at a cost of $2.7 million. Several of those projects involve the replacement of existing water mains. We have a continual program to replace existing water mains due to the age and condition. You may ask why. This year alone, we've had 33 water main breaks throughout the Warminster water system. That's due to the age of the pipes. The old pipes are cast iron, over 40 years, vibration of traffic over top of them, and poor bedding that was installed when they were constructed, they end up cracking, just like you would drop a plate, eventually they just crack. 33 water mains in one year, and that's pretty standard. The Authority has a significant amount of water main breaks, and this program of replacing the water mains with ductile iron pipe will prevent that from happening. One of the other projects, which I think is very important, we added a second interconnection point to the North Wales Water Authority system. We currently only had one point, and that was by Ivyland Road, well six, the elevated tank there. That was our only source of water. We felt it was imperative to get some redundancy in the system, so we now have a second interconnection, which has just been activated near the corner of Valley Road and County Line. This not only provides us with a second source of water from the North Wales Authority, but it also improves the quality of water throughout our system. We have water coming in from two points, mixes the system better, and it provides better 2018 was a good year, but in looking back since 2010, the Authority has completed about 20 projects related to the water main system. These projects total 21 miles of pipe that's either been installed or replaced at a cost of $21 million. The Authority continues to be active. We already have our plans for the projects in 2019, which will again provide for approximately two miles of pipe at a cost of approximately $2 million. So, these are all things that have been completed, and looking forward, there's a lot still to be done. The second map that you see up there is a combination of all of the products that have been completed since 2010. All of those streets that you see in blue have new water mains in them, but an additional benefit is when we put the water mains in, we also go back and repave the streets, curb to curb. So, in addition to installing water mains, we're helping the township with paving the streets due to the damage that we caused during the installation. So, that's it on the water mains, Tim.
Additionally, in 2018, we demolished buildings at two unused wells, and they were unproductive wells, the one on Worthington Drive and the other on Tennyson Drive. We anticipate the sale of those properties in 2019. On the sewer side, we've completed a little less than two miles of sewer pipe relining again this year. This process renews the existing sewer pipes without the need to dig up the streets, a pretty impressive process, but it's much more cost-effective than open-cutting the streets and replacing the pipe directly. We are nearly completed with our sewer pump station six upgrade project. Electrical service, electric controls, and pumps have all been upgraded. We've upgraded the log college wastewater treatment plant operation to improve performance and reduce chemical usage. Early 2019, we began a four-year contract that we negotiated in the middle of last year when electric rates were really favorable, so we'll have a long-term contract as a utility. We use an enormous amount of electricity, so that's very good to have that favorable contract starting. In 2019, we're gonna coordinate with Township Public Works crews, if we can, to complete paving of the remaining streets that we haven't repaved for our water main projects in 2018. We've also awarded a contract for sewer pump station six force main. That's pipe in the ground in the street. We're gonna replace pipe in Buchanan Revolutionary, and a small part of Centennial Hancock Coventry, and a good portion of Newtown Road. This project is scheduled to start in February. Anticipated water main replacement areas, as Joe discussed, for next year are Murray Circle, Fisher, Penrose, and Spencer Lanes, a small portion of Phillips from Fisher to Spencer, and a section of Roberts from Mueller to Sherrill. Additionally, a section of Brennan from Ivyland Road to Stub Road. We will be communicating those projects to affected residents as they are approved. Our water meters are at the end of their useful life. In early 2019, we anticipate awarding meter replacement contract. The new metering technology will provide us with additional tools to provide increased customer service. Further information regarding water meter replacements will be mailed to all residents as this project begins. Recently, we sent out a rate increase letter indicating an increase in the cost for water and sewer service. We can compare our rates to other municipal authorities and private water providers. In comparison to 33 local water providers, we are 15th lowest. On the sewer side, with 33 being the lowest cost, we're 30th out of 33. I or Joe will be happy to answer any questions regarding water and sewer service.
Thank you for the information, you and Mr. Nolan, is it right?
Yes.
Thank you. What type of water meters would we be getting, and how would they work? Just to give an idea to the residents, you know, when you talk about replacing water meters, sometimes people get a little nervous.
There's two different kinds. There is a positive displacement meter, that's been the standard meter for years. They have different kinds of positive displacement, some are pistons, some are oscillating discs, and they have a new, what's the correct term, Jim? Ultrasonic, they have a new ultrasonic meter. We haven't selected them, they're pretty close on price, but we'll be doing that in January, and we'll certainly be communicating that to the resident.
Okay.
What's great about these meters is that we can read them sometimes every 10 minutes. Currently, we read them every 90 days. So, if you had a leak in your house and you didn't know it, and you didn't hear the water running, you can get an enormous water and sewer bill. So, this will allow us to more actively notify a customer to say, hey, you've got some really unusual usage, before it becomes a real problem. We'll be able to read the meters from the office with the push of a button.
I think that's something that will be very helpful to the residents, like you said, especially if they're losing water, like drive up their price. The next question I have, how many water mains do we actually have in the township? Do you know? Off the top of your head, I'm not gonna...
We measure it in miles, and we have about 135 miles.
Okay. And about how many would you say, I know like they showed the sections that you had done, but how many miles have you gotten done so far?
That blue represents 22 miles.
Oh, okay. All right.
So, we don't have to replace all of them. Some of them are newer ductile iron, we don't have to replace all of them, but there's still a lot. We have concentrated on the worst areas. One of the worst areas had about, in one little loop road on Bloomfield, we had 18 breaks on that road over the history. So, we obviously target those roads first. And any road that has significant break history, Oak Leaf we did this year, had an unbelievable amount of breaks on it.
Okay. And then my last question is, which law firm did you employ to file suit against the firefighting foam companies?
Annapole Weis, her Philadelphia law firm specializing in environmental law.
Okay. They think we have a pretty strong case, correct?
So, they, litigation is tough. The A-T triple F foam manufacturers are trying to use the fact that they met the government spec, and pulling the United States Department of Defense into it, suing the United States Department of Defense is nearly impossible. We've done it before successfully, but we don't know the outcome. If it was easy, I'd be jumping up and down, but unfortunately...
Right.
It's gonna be tough. We don't have to pay that firm, it's on a contingent basis.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other board members have anything from Mr. Haggy?
Yeah, you mentioned you're gonna pursue grant possibilities. Can you span on that, like how much you're looking to apply for?
So, we have applied for, first time was 18 million, I think the second time was a little over 11 million. They don't have that money available, so the grant that's possible this time is 5 million. We're hopeful, we get the 5 million, that we can get additional funds later. We have some treatment options that we're testing right now, we're on the cutting edge of that. If we can use resin instead of granular activated carbon, the GAC, it is a lot more cost-effective. It's not currently permitted by DEP, but if we successfully can do that, it's really a lot less capital cost. So, a $5 million grant from the state's gonna go a lot, lot further to get treatment systems installed around our wells.
5 million, not 18 million?
This time is 5.
Okay.
That's all they had this time, so we'd be gleeful if we get that.
Okay. Not 18, all right.
Anyone else have anything? I just, before, I will open it up to the public, but I want to thank you for coming in for the update. And for the public certification, you do hold public meetings next door.
Yes.
Once a month, anyone that wants to come to the public meeting to ask questions regarding your water sewer service, they're always available. When are your meetings?
We're, is it third Monday? Second Monday normally, second Monday, 4:00 p.m.
4:00 p.m. next door. No, thank you. Does anyone from the public have any questions? Tim's gonna cover stormwater, but regarding your water sewer service, anyone does?
Well, just a quick question.
Please, please come up.
Sure, sure. Where?
Um, speaking of...
Usually, I'm gonna start, but...
You could go to the podium, please, just tell us who you are, name and address, please.
I've been here for over 40 years. My question is, though, you were talking about price comparison to other places. I think what people have a problem with, I know in my neighborhood, is the price increase when we're still buying bottled water because we're not comfortable drinking the water, we don't feel it's safe. And I think that's where the problem is coming in, with people being upset about the increase. If we felt it was safe to even give our dogs, I think, I think people wouldn't be upset about the increase. So, when people get upset, you need to understand that we're still buying bottled water. So, and you're comparing it to other areas, I mean, is their water potentially poisoned, the wells poisoned, where they shut down, were they going through all this? Because, I mean, you gotta look at your, the people that you're talking to, it's not just here, it's the normal people in everyday neighborhoods. Like, I think sometimes people forget that. You're working with regular people who are buying water, and now you're increasing the water price. And I know not you personally, please don't think that I'm saying, it's going in your pocket, because it's not, but that's the concern.
So, thank you for that. We get the concern. The water that we provide is some of the finest that you can get. We have, we're surrounded by seven municipalities. You won't find better water quality than in Warminster. Three of those seven have done something. The other ones, I can't, I can't answer for. But, so, we understand that people aren't comfortable with the water quality. We get it. We understand that water went out with high levels of PFOS, PFOA for a lot of years, and so we understand that concern. But I can tell you, the water quality in Warminster is some of the finest in the area. I drink it. I drink it every day. I drink it in my home. You know, I was at the meeting last night for the state health department put on with the, with the blood levels. People are concerned, there was Warminster residents at that meeting, and they, you know, they said, ah, you know, I don't drink it, I hate that chlorine, I hate the chlorine. I don't drink the chlorine, I always filter it out, I don't like the taste of it, but we have to put it in. So, it's required by DEP, and those levels are scheduled to go even higher.
And to water quality, Tim, I know that you and your board took the action a few years ago to shut all of the wells down, even though you weren't required to...
Correct.
...by DEP, and go to North Wales for that reason.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Which was, in my opinion, the right thing to do, so. So, does anyone else have anything on water and sewer? Before Tim shifts gears, he says a second part of his presentation. Okay, saying none, Tim, the next, the next part of your presentation is regards to storm
Earlier this year, the Township, the Authority began discussions to determine if the Authority could take over responsibilities for stormwater management. We have been meeting to discuss this, and have been working toward completing the necessary legal and engineering work to complete this transfer. If everything goes smoothly, we will complete the transfer in early 2019. Having the Authority responsible for stormwater makes a lot of sense. Stormwater regulations are becoming much more stringent with treatment and testing now necessary. Pipes and inlet need to be replaced, stormwater systems maintained. This work complements closely with Authority responsibilities. The big question for everyone is, what is this work going to cost, and how will the Authority pay for it? Our engineers provided a memo to the Board regarding potential costs that other townships or authorities have adopted as a stormwater charge. For adopting any fee, we will have a public meeting to discuss stormwater issues and potential fees, and any credits that would be available. I've had preliminary discussions, I think Ken's here, from the Environmental Advisory Council, the chairman, the EAC, sounds like they'd be happy to be involved with this process. Community engagement's gonna be key to this. On a personal note, we're five days away from Christmas, and almost at the end of the year, in the spirit of the season, and on behalf of the Authority and employees, I thank all of you, our customers. We truly appreciate being public servants.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Before you, before you go, I want to, we can talk about stormwater a little bit. I'll open it up to the Board first, and we've discussed this quite a bit, but we'll open to more discussion, so the public understands what we're doing here. And the biggie for me is the MS4 program, which the folks need to know, it's an unfunded mandate by the federal government. They're demanding that we do this, but not giving us any money. Correct?
That is correct.
Right. So, as far as that goes, I mean, I suggest you reach out to your congressman, your state representative, your senator, because we have.
You've read Mr. Kennard's report on stormwater. There's a TMDL in the One Watershed, but no one has any idea how we can meet. His report states it repeatedly, so, for phosphorus reduction. So, it's a challenge, those regulations are a challenge.
And expensive as well.
Yes.
I mean, we were talking at the time, I think, correct, if I'm wrong, three regional stormwater basins through the town, throughout the township, that are gonna be required.
Regional, that's right.
Right. At a cost of $1 million.
Five, maybe.
Thank you, Uncle Sam.
Yeah.
And Township is fortunate to have their own authority, I mean, that's really what Mr. Haggy, residents aren't gonna understand until they really start, understand how complicated stormwaters become, and the regulations, and what the Authority... how complicated stormwater's become, and the regulations, and, and what the authority can do for the township, but obviously, we represent other municipalities where they have to have joint authorities with other municipalities, and there's just layers upon layers of trying to work, as, as everybody knows up here, with other municipalities. Just on the TMDL, on the lower end of the county, we're part of that as well, and it just slows everything down, when you don't have your own authority, their own staff, own engineer, they have to have their own, you know, basically their own committee and professionals. So, I think in the long run, the township is in good hands with the authority and the staff they already have, the knowledge that Mr. Nolan brings. I'm not going anywhere, we're, we'll be working with, with their engineer, and I think it'll be a joint effort, EAC and the township staff.
And this is why we've asked the authority to step up and get involved in this, and we're grateful that, that you have stepped up.
Yeah, thank you.
So, there's, does anyone have any questions for Tim regarding the, because it's on our agenda tonight to take some action on this, after Tim's presentation? If anyone has any questions, please?
I mean, the only thing I'm gonna say is just, I mean, before I was even up here, and I was sitting in the audience, I mean, I remember the, the board at the time, talking, I mean, it was like, I think it was an hour-long conversation about stormwater projects, you know, I think it was Leo Quinn was the chair of the board at the time, and was talking about what to prioritize, what not to prioritize, you only had so much money for a certain amount of the jobs. I mean, if anybody is wondering what stormwater management is, I mean, if you've, if, if you've ever had water in your basement, if you've ever had, I mean, it's all attached to that, it's not just about the water going into the streams, it's, I mean, it's the whole thing.
And I, I touched on it at the last meeting, I'll be glad to touch on it again. Seven years ago, I think Gilmore and Associates did a, did a report on us identifying the major stormwater issues throughout Warminster.
We did feasibility studies in certain areas, that was in addition to the ones that we actually completed, or Public Works did, or we bid them out.
And we took immediate action at Whittier, which was an expensive job that fixed that problem over there. We took immediate action, it was, it was deemed to be a million dollar job over there at Eighth and Green, and we, the board took immediate action to have our good guys at Public Works do the job themselves, and it costed between two and three hundred thousand, I think, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yep, that saved a lot of money.
So, there's no longer cars floating through Eighth and Green intersection. And then, we had a huge problem on Centennial Road. We had a development come in, a developer offered to put a regional basin in there if we, if we gave additional density. It was a tough decision for the board, we were split on it, but we thought, this is the only opportunity we're gonna have to address this problem there, and it was one of our last major problems in the township, and it's, it's completed, it's done. So, that, Brian, I, I understand exactly what you were talking about, and this was seven years ago, stormwater was a major issue in this township. It still is, but we've done the best that we can to start, to tackle it, and it's expensive, extremely expensive.
We can see the improvement, see, when you have heavy rain or anything, in those certain areas, it's not as bad as it was before, so you can, you can definitely see improvement over.
There were three major projects that were completed in the last seven years, at, at reduced cost, the Eighth and Green was huge, and we were able to do that job ourselves.
I mean, this has been one of the wettest years on record, I mean, Greg, I mean, how, how is your staff, I mean, you've been, have you had a tremendous amount of stormwater complaints this year?
Um, I would say we've had more than usual, I mean, it's, first of all, our golf course has been, had, very hard, there's a lot of, you know, loss of rounds over there, inability to play, but just in general, yeah, there's been a lot of complaints, and a lot of the complaints, unfortunately, there's not much we can do about, because they're completely on private property.
Right.
But we do address the ones that we can, but it has certainly been an incredibly wet year.
How are we gonna handle those complaints moving forward, if, if this goes to more earthwork?
Yeah. I mean, the complaints going forward, as they take over, we funnel to the, the stormwater, you know, to municipal authority. And I'd still work hand in hand with our, our Public Works if necessary, so it's not gonna be an overnight transition, but they would be over there. But, quite frankly, when people make complaints, if they come here, we're not gonna just say, go call them over there, we'll work with them and make sure they get to the right person.
Okay.
And in future, land developments, when land development comes in, as we all know, that they're required to retain their, their runoff by ordinance, that will be handled by the township.
Yeah.
At land development time, correct?
Land development process is not changing.
Correct. Okay.
Okay, so, when you have a, a resident who has a stormwater management problem in their backyard, and it's determined whether it's, you know, it, it's a private issue, or the township should be involved, that's gonna be transitioned over to the water authority, they're gonna make that call, correct?
Yeah, we'd, we'd work with them, but most likely it'd be their call, yes.
Okay, whether, alright.
Does anyone else have anything for Tim? Does any board members have anything? Sure, please, come up, please. Could you please come up? I'm sorry. Please give us your name and address.
I'm Bernie Zitire, and I live at four seventy-five B Ivy Street. I just wanted to know who determines where the work gets done, replacing the pipes, and where, who determines what streets they, they work on?
Be a question for Mr. Haggy.
And when you see a lot of water in the area where I live, I see quite a bit of water, and I'm wondering, what's the cause, cause of that? Okay.
I missed the second part of the question. I think you're talking about stormwater runoff, not water, water and sewer pipes, correct?
Well, I'm, I don't know, where, if it's.
I think the first part was about the water mains, second part's about stormwater runoff in, up in the four hundred block of the Speedway, up near Ivy?
Right, yes.
Ivy. So, I, I, I personally don't know where that runoff's coming, at that four hundred block of.
Tomorrow would be a good time for Eric to take a stop out and take a look.
Yeah.
Maybe if it's a matter of a clogged drain or something, or it needs major work, as the authority gets involved, we would have to put it on the list.
But in terms of determining how the, how, how the authority decides what, what pipes to work on, I would defer to Mr. Haggy on that, on that.
Bernie, are you noticing more now because of the excess rain we've been having?
Well, I've noticed it since I've moved there, six years ago.
Oh, okay.
As, and then, it's next to the house, and I, when I first moved there, I didn't have any mold on, in the basement, but now I have significant mold, well, I had, I had some repairs done, but it really increased a lot, so I'm figuring there's more water around the house, and where's the water coming from?
See what Mr. Haggy has to say.
The, if you're talking about water mains that we talked about originally, we determine which ones to do based on breakage, how, how much, how many problems have we had with that particular pipe? But I think your real question is the stormwater, around your house, things like that.
Yeah, and, and we have a drop in the, when you go into the front, front door, the, the pavement dropped, and I asked if, maybe there's a broken pipe under there, and perhaps, but they said I would have to get a plumber to dig it up, is that so?
If you have a water supply pipe, yes, it would be, if it's at your door, it, our, our responsibility ends at the curb stop, which is really near the edge of the street.
So, that flooding on, on the property has nothing to do with pipes that might be broken from the street?
I doubt it, but we'll come out and look at it. We have your address, we'll come out and get.
Do you wanna leave your address with?
Forgot it.
If you wanna leave your, your address with Amanda, I mean, we can have Eric take a ride by tomorrow, I mean, if it's something that, that's in our purview, we'll certainly take a look. And he'll, you can share that with Mr. Haggy as well, Amanda? Thank you. Does anyone else have anything for Mr. Haggy? Yeah, sure, please.
Good evening, everyone. Ken Hayes, eight fifty Lingor Drive. So, Mr. Haggy and I have had some initial discussions, and as chair of the EAC, we recognize there's, there's various ways to reduce the amount of flow into the stormwater system, you know, whether it be more pervious surface, pervious paving, and things like that, so we look forward to working with whoever it may be, whether it be the municipal authority or the board here, to establish ways to incentivize people, the residents and the business owners to create more pervious surface, to reduce the amount of flow into the stormwater system. So, thank you.
May I, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Ken? Okay, so, you're saying that residents can take an active role by using impervious services, correct?
Yeah, things like cisterns, where you can water your, your gardens and your, and your lawns, you can use, you can create rainwater gardens, there's a lot of different ways, there's, there's, it doesn't necessarily have to be engineering, but there's, there's a lot of ways to reduce the amount of flow into the streets and into the stormwater system, and ultimately into our streams and rivers.
Okay, so my question is, a lot of residents probably don't know the different things that they can do to help alleviate some, some of these situations, would, how would you get that information out to the public?
Well, there's gonna be multiple discussions over the course of the, the, the January, February, the winter, and, and early spring, about ways to reduce the amount of stormwater flow, whether it be overlaying flow or runoff into the streams. We'll have that at our meetings, we welcome everybody to come to the meetings.
When are they?
Part, pardon?
When are they?
They are the fourth Monday of every month. And, and in January, I'll have more discussions, and we're gonna do some environmental, excuse me, we're gonna do part of our environmental education series, we're gonna be talking about the groundwater, the water we drink, what's in it, how the municipal authority's protecting the water, a host of other things. So, we encourage everybody to participate.
Thank you, I think that's a great service for the public, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Haggy, before we move on to the next gen item, does anyone from the board? Okay, thank you, Mr. Haggy, we appreciate the update. Thank you, Joe, Nolan.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on tonight's agenda is Land Use Matters Public Hearings and Ordinances, and this, this dovetails right onto that, which is consider, consider adoption of ordinance seven fifty, amendment to the Warminster Municipal Authority Charter. Mr. Bartle?
Yes, thank you. As, as has been discussed this evening and previously, the township is giving the necessary authority to the municipal authority to allow it to conduct the stormwater operations. The first matter for the board's consideration is the adoption of ordinance seven fifty, which is an amendment to the Warminster Municipal Authority Charter, that gives it up, that gives them the opportunity to, to file that amendment with the state, so that at the state level, they have acquired then the authority to handle the stormwater issues that the township wants them to handle. The second matter, B, is the consider authorization to advertise the ordinance, which amends the township code, to grant stormwater management abilities to the Warminster Municipal Authority. So that takes those same things that we're going, that we've told the state, that we're going to have the, the authority do, and it gives them the local authorization by ordinance to do them. So that's the, the basis of the two matters you have before you.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to adopt ordinance seven fifty, amendment to the Municipal Authority Charter?
Seven fifty.
Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Monroe, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing now to call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up is item B, consider authorization to advertise ordinance amending the township code to grant stormwater management abilities to the Warminster Municipal Authority. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Frescatore, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Monroe, Mr. McPhillips, any further discussion from the board? Is there any from the public? Seeing now to call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, motion carries. The W M U A board, they're gonna have a lot of work on their hands moving forward, very busy. The next one up, I'm gonna give to Mr. Bartle for an explanation, it's conditional use twenty eighteen dash one, seven eighty Falcon Circle, and I believe we're gonna be asking for continuance.
Uh, yes, the, the conditional use matter for seven eighty Falcon Circle, the Fuge, was, was scheduled to be heard this evening, sometime in the middle of the day, my office was contacted, and I, I spoke with, with Amanda, and we discussed some of the, the issues that had taken place with respect to a recent event that took place at the facility. I also had the opportunity of speaking with the zoning hearing board solicitor, they had approved a variance for the, the property owner on the thirteenth of December, just, just recently, and there had been some issues with that, because obviously, the event that took place a couple of days ago was not in conformance with what had been represented to have been the case, to, to be the future with respect to the facility. So I thought there were a couple of things that were necessary, the first thing, rather than to have the hearing this evening on the conditional use, I contacted the applicant's counsel after discussion with Mr. Schuster, and getting the authorization to do that, and, and we, we agreed that they would request a continuance of this evening's hearing, and waive all of the time requirements under the Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code to have that hearing. At the same time, I've discussed with, with Mr. Schuster, the, that, that our recommendation to the board would be to, for the board to pass the following motion, that move that the Board of Supervisors authorized the appeal of the zoning hearing board decision of December thirteen, two thousand eighteen, in the matter of Cravero Turnkey Solutions, the Fuge LLC for property located at seven eighty Falcon Circle, number one oh one, and the township solicitor is directed to take the appropriate actions to effectuate the intention of the motion. That way, we can appeal the matter, so that the, the zoning hearing board decision is not cast in stone at this point, we can have the opportunity of finding out what did happen a couple of days ago with respect to the, the parking problems that existed, what the recommendations of our experts will be with respect to that, and have a meeting with the, the, the property owners, in an attempt to resolve this to the benefit of the, the township, the property owners, and the neighbors, that, that apparently there were, there were a lot of complaints to the municipality as a result of what took place just a couple of days ago. So, that being the case, that's, that's my explanation for why we're continuing tonight with regard to the conditional use, and with respect to the motion that, that I've just read, I am hopeful that the board would, would make that motion and approve that motion, to allow us to appeal, so that all the balls are still in the air with respect to this project, and we can, we can move forward to resolve it. If we, if we don't do that with respect to the zoning hearing board application, whatever relief has been granted there, we don't have control over anymore, and that, that's, so it's important.
It could be a problem.
Yeah, it's, it's important, you maintain the control, so when we go into the meeting, we can do what's best for the township.
So, Frank, for clarification, then, we want the Fuge to succeed, and we wanna, we wanna find some solutions with, that's gonna work for the residents, for the township, and for the owner of the property, is that correct?
Yes, yes, and in all fairness, when, when, when we had correspondence with applicant's counsel, they were, they were moving in that direction. I, I think they, they understood that there had been a problem a couple of days ago, they had some, some reasons for that, and of course, our experts are gonna have to review that, but I had, I had the first call at about eleven o'clock, and this meeting started at seven, and there just wasn't time to, to get everybody on board and discuss it, and, and be ready to do anything tonight, so that's why.
Thank you.
Alright, so you, you have proposed a motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Frescatore, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McPhillips, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public?
I do.
Sure, go ahead.
So, just to clarify, so, the conditional use, two thousand eighteen dash oh one, we are, that is not something that we're gonna be passing tonight, or that's gonna be?
No, you're not, you're not gonna have that hearing tonight, they have continued, they have asked us to continue the hearing, and they have given us the, the time to do that, they've waived the time requirements.
Gotcha.
So that will not be heard tonight.
Okay.
What you're, what you're acting on here tonight is the zoning hearing board relief that was granted to them.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing now to call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, motion carries. You'll keep us updated on that through the township manager?
Certainly will.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, we'll probably be at the meeting with the, with the other side.
We got calls the other day, the parking was a mess over there, people couldn't get into tax office to pay their tax bills, it's, it's a problem that needs to be worked out before we go any, any further. Okay. Next up is item D, two thousand eighteen dash eleven, preliminary final land development, three fifty Ivy Land Road.
Yes, sir. This is a conditional preliminary final land development approval, the resolution has been prepared for the board's consideration. The applicant is Sand Chris Properties Incorporated, the property is located at three fifty Ivy Land Road. In this matter, the, the applicant proposes to construct a four, excuse me, a two hundred forty-nine thousand seven hundred square foot warehouse building for warehouse and associated office use. There are various parking spaces that are associated with that use as well. The conditional preliminary final approval is subject to the applicant accepting certain conditions, including compliance with all applicable township review letters as amended, which would include a township planning letter, a township traffic engineer letter, a township zoning officer letter. traffic engineer letter, a township zoning officer letter, a township engineer letter, and a township planning commission recommendation, uh, as well as a county planning commission letter. Uh, the signing, number two, the signing of the township's required land development documentation, uh, prepared to the satisfaction of the township solicitor, including a land development agreement, a stormwater management agreement, and a tree covenant. Uh, number three, the posting of necessary, uh, financial security for the improvements. Uh, number four, complying with the zoning board's, uh, September five, two thousand eighteen decision and order. Uh, number five, satisfying all applicable township codes, uh, sewer authority and water authority requirements, and a copy of the, uh, authority's agreements, permits, and/or authority's acceptance letter must be provided to the township. Number six, identify all stormwater inlets and outfall structures on the final plan in accordance with the P A D E P Municipal, uh, Separate Storm Sewer Systems Requirements, that's the MS four requirements. Uh, seven, obtaining all other applicable permits having jurisdiction over the project. And eight, paying all applicable project-related costs and fees, including any consultant/solicitor fees and required fee in lieu of, uh, when due and owing. And, uh, this is, uh, subject to the, uh, granting of, uh, fifteen waivers that are, uh, that are part of the motion. Uh, the motion's been prepared for the, uh, for the board's consideration and is ready to be acted upon. I note that, uh, the, uh, the applicant is represented by, uh, Mr. Hecker, Tom Hecker, who's here, uh, on his behalf tonight. And Tom, if you have a few words to say, please do so.
Yes, thank you, Frank. Uh, members of board, good evening. Tom Hecker on behalf of the applicant. Project was, uh, a little bit challenging for us, uh, in the beginning of the property, which is, uh, eighteen point six acres roughly, has two zoning classifications, uh, IO district as well as the I district. Um, thank you, thanks to the, uh, input that we received from township professionals and township staff, uh, we were able to map out, uh, the path going forward, uh, to go into the development process, uh, the first step of which was the zoning hearing board application, as Frank has indicated. We received a necessary relief, uh, part of which was mandated by the fact that we had the split zoning classification, uh, submitted land development plans, uh, went to the planning commission, have received the recommendation, favorable recommendation from the planning commission. So we're here tonight for your, uh, consideration of that plan. Um, we have up on the, uh, screen, uh, electronic version, uh, of the plan. I think there's a couple of other, uh, pictures that are part of that. Uh, John Cornick is our civil engineer from, uh, K two engineering. If you would like, uh, to take a quick look at the, uh, slides, we're happy to, uh, explain to you anything about the project.
Yeah, sure. We'd love to hear some more. Amanda, I think we might be shifting gears on the...
You have a point, you have a point or two. I didn't break one. That one's fine. We can start with the site plan. So, uh, good evening. As Mr. Hecker said, uh, we're here on behalf of the applicant for three hundred, for three fifty Ivy Land Road. Uh, this is a two hundred forty-nine thousand, uh, seven hundred square foot warehouse building. The building's being built on spec, meaning...
A little closer than Mike.
A little bit closer, but, meaning that the, uh, there is no end user at this point. So we tried to plan this, this property to be as nimble within the marketplace and, uh, working with your professionals, I think we've achieved that. Uh, just to give you a, a layout of the, the plan that you have before you, this is our site plan. To the right of the page is, is running north, to the left of the page is, is south, uh, to the bottom is, is east, and to the top is west. And to give you a general overview to location, uh, what you do see is that large gray building on the top of the page, that's nine fifty-five Myrens, uh, the applicant owns as well. Uh, that's a mixed-use building, industrial and office. I think it's been a longstanding, uh, building in, in the community. And then to the north of that large building at the corner of Ivy Land and Myrens is the, um, is the Pierce Aluminum Building that was recently constructed. I think it was approved by the, by the, uh, board and the, and supervisors a few years back. Uh, what we do have are two full movement, uh, driveways accessing the facility. So the, the driveway that is closest to the intersection of Ivy Land and, and Myrens on the, um, west side is, uh, large enough so that a WB sixty-seven truck can come in and out. Um, those are the largest trucks that can be utilized on, on the roadway. Uh, and you can see on the west side, west elevation of that building is where our loading dock is. So the loading dock, uh, faces the loading dock of Myrens. So we feel that the, the position of the building's appropriate in, in the zone. On the east driveway, that's a little, uh, smaller driveway, that's for the domestic vehicle access. Uh, and then we have, uh, essentially on the east elevation, the front of the building. Amanda, if we could go to, well, let me finish up. We have two, uh, stormwater basins, one on the south side of the property, one on the north side of basin, or property. And then we have an underground basin that's going to collect the roof runoff, uh, the clean runoff and infiltrate into the ground. I'd like to go to the next elevation, which is, that's the, uh, corner elevation. So if you were looking at our plan, that would be the northeast corner of the building. Uh, so we have a building height, uh, dependent on the clear span inside, a maximum height of forty-five, forty-four feet. Uh, your ordinance, believe it or not, allows us to go up to almost eighty feet, just based on the positioning of the building, uh, the setback from, from Ivy Land Road. What we did do is, is plan this building to have, uh, roughly ten percent office, which allows us to have, uh, multi-tenant users if we're, we need to. And then it also allows us just to, uh, lease this thing out to one tenant. So that's why we tried to keep, uh, the amount of parking that we asked for. And, uh, I think that, uh, it's going to be a successful project in the community.
As John has indicated, at the present time, there's no, uh, particular end users. Uh, we're optimistic that, uh, that will be occupied. Uh, the initial, uh, thought was that, um, some existing tenant or tenants at nine fifty-five who are outgrowing space may want larger space, move into it, free up their space that would then be available to be relet. So, uh, we're very optimistic about, uh, the Warmminster Township economy in this area, and, uh, my clients prepare to invest a substantial amount of money, uh, for this project. I will note also, uh, as the resolu, the, uh, conditional preliminary approval, uh, resolution was read by, uh, Mr. Bartle, uh, we have been provided a copy. The conditions outlined in that resolution are acceptable to my client.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If I can interrupt, I have one amendment, um, I know we were...
They were acceptable.
I hate to make this be the one, but, um, we're miss, and you, we have already discussed, I think your office is talking with our staff, uh, township staff about the waiver of public improvements. Uh, I think there was discussion about the fee in lieu of...
Yes.
That should be noted, uh, in part eight, uh, in the resolution. I think that is missing. Even though we worked it out, um, Frank, I think, uh, part eight, under required improvements, a waiver's being requested, uh, for no sidewalk and curbing. I think we have agreed to...
Yes, we've agreed to that.
It doesn't, we don't have to have the amount, but we have worked that out. The tree fees and all the other ones that are typical with land development, we have that in the resolution, but we should just amend that to say...
All right, and, uh, what, what way, what is it that, uh, is being waived?
Sidewalk and curb along Ivy Land...
Correct.
Road. Be subject to a fee in lieu of that. We've actually, Mr. Hecker's already initiated that conversation, uh, with the staff, so...
All right, so we'll put in there, uh, fee in lieu of, including but limited to fee in lieu of for sidewalk and curb along?
Yes.
Ivy Land Road.
Ivy Land Road.
And, uh, there's other projects in the area that, in keeping with that, there's no sidewalk at Pierce Aluminum and, and down to Myrens Road, so there was no need to have the sidewalk. And, uh, we worked with their engineer on the, uh, on the curbing as well.
All right, so with that modification, Mr. Hecker, still, still acceptable?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Hecker.
Before we take any action, I'll open it up to the board for discussion or comments.
Let's have one. The, that's, that's the front of the building there, correct?
So that would be the corner, if, um, Amanda, if you don't mind going back to the first slide, sorry. That corner is representative, or if you can see here, that's representative of the, what we would call the northeast corner.
Okay.
That's what you would be seeing from Ivy Land Road.
Oh, okay. It's a nice-looking building for industrial, I mean, it's changed over the years, the way industrial buildings actually look, so aesthetically, it looks very, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it can depend on who moves in there, but how, how many jobs maximum are we talking? Could it be, potentially be?
It really does depend on, uh, on who occupies. It's, it's, it's a, it's a big building. How many parking, how many parking spaces?
We have a hundred and seventy-nine parking spaces. So if you apply your ordinance, and if we were to go to the ten percent of office space, it's a pretty significant amount of people that that building can hold. So it's, it's embarrassing.
Are you anticipating a single tenant for the location, or could we go to multiple?
That would... That, that would be ideal, obviously, a single tenant, but the building has been designed so that it can be...
Sectioned.
Sectioned up. If you can see in this, this, uh, this elevation, you can see the multi, three or four doors along that east elevation.
Like flex spaces.
Essentially.
I mean, the only comments I have is that I, I think it's a nice-looking building and I really like the potential of the jobs coming in here. And it's much nicer than, we had someone, I was just asking Mr. Kennard about, I guess about two years ago, that wanted to put a mulching...
It wasn't, no, it was last year.
Wanted to put a mulching operation in there. And we would have had a hard time stopping them because it was a permitted use of that property. We would have had a heck of a time. This is a much, much, much better use for that property than a mulching operation.
Okay.
Definitely.
We will not be mulching.
Thank you. But we would have had a heck of a time stopping them. We would have, so... I don't have any other comments. Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments about the plan, the use? I mean, now, now's the time. Okay, with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Bartle to craft a motion then, please.
Yes, uh, uh, the motion would be, uh, to move that the board adopt the resolution number, uh, two zero one eight dash forty-six, uh, for, uh, for... Applicants, I'm sorry, I have the wrong, I have the wrong motion. It's, it's, I'm sorry, it's resolution number forty-five, uh, for applicant Sand Chris Properties, Inc., three fifty Ivy Land Road, as presented to the board.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. McPhillips, second?
Second.
Ms. Frescatour, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? See, now to call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you and good luck. Hopefully you get a tenant in there right away.
And again, we appreciate it.
And Tom Hecker, it's very good to see you and I'm glad you're, glad you're doing well.
Thank you, Mr. McKee.
Good to see you in the room again.
As I tell everyone, it's great to be seen.
That's right. It's good to see you in the room again. Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, you too.
Okay, next up is item E, which is, uh, two thousand eighteen dash zero nine Preliminary Final Land Development for six twenty-five Mary Street. Mr. Bartle?
Yes, thank you. The next matter for the board's consideration is resolution, uh, two zero one eight dash forty-six. Uh, this is, the applicant is, uh, Bussinger, Bussinger, and Bussinger. Property is, uh, six twenty-five Mary Street. The applicant proposes to construct a four thousand nine hundred sixty square foot light manufacturing building, uh, on the property located at, uh, that address within the township's IO Industrial Office District. And the project's improvements include a proposed standard vehicle parking area with six parking spaces, loading facilities, and underground infiltration facility to address stormwater management, landscaping, and light. Uh, there are various conditions of the, uh, of the approval. The first, compliance with all applicable township review letters as amended, including the, uh, county planning commission letter, uh, and the, uh, township zoning officer letter, as well as the township planner letter, the township emergency management services letter, the township engineer letter, and the township planning commission recommendation. Uh, number two, uh, signing the township's required land development documentation, prepared to the satisfaction of the township solicitor, including a land development agreement, stormwater management agreement, and a tree covenant. Three, the posting of the necessary financial security, uh, for all of those improvements. And four, uh, complying with the zoning board's May twenty-three, two thousand eighteen decision and order. Five, satisfying all applicable township code, sewer authority and water authority requirements. A copy of the authority's agreements, permits, and/or authority acceptance letter must be provided to the township. Six, identifying all stormwater inlets and outfall structures on the final plan in accordance with the P A D E P Municipal Separate Storm Systems Requirements, again, the MS four. Seven, obtaining all other applicable permits having jurisdiction over the project. And eight, paying all applicable project-related cost and fees, including any consultant/solicitor's fees, when due and owing. Uh, there are also thirteen waivers that are granted, uh, with regard to, uh, to this resolution. So the, uh, the resolution, uh, has been appropriately summarized for the board. I see that the, uh, the applicant is represented by, uh, Steve Harris, uh, here this evening. Steve, you have a few words for the board?
Yes, this is obviously a much more modest proposal than the last one. Uh, this is an infill, uh, lot, uh, on Mary Street. Uh, the Bussingers, uh, two of whom are, uh, Bussinger and Bussinger, uh, are here, uh, tonight. Uh, they own the, uh, the building, uh, directly across the street from this. This, this property had a little office building on it that was, uh, a, uh, union office, uh, when the Naval Air Station, Johnsville Naval Air Station was there. It burned down, uh, and was subsequently demolished. There was a garage on the property that was demolished. It's a vacant lot. Uh, this is, uh, a, uh, as they, as Frank said, a four thousand nine hundred and sixty square foot building. It's divided into two units, uh, and, uh, we, it's only on a third of an acre of lot. It's a shame we don't have the, an aerial, uh, of the area, but it, it fits in, uh, as you can see, it, it, it fits in with, with what's there. Uh, and, uh, while I'm, I'm always prepared to babble endlessly, uh, we have, uh, approved, I've been given the resolution, uh, two thousand eighteen dash forty-six. My clients have already signed the acceptance, uh, of that resolution, uh, and unless, uh, you want me to talk further, uh, I would simply ask that the resolution be approved.
Any comments from the board? Questions, comments?
Now, looking at it, I mean, I, I have Google Earth on my iPad, so I brought, brought it up. It literally is, uh, if, for people who are wondering where it's at, it's, it's behind Tires Plus, uh, right there at, uh, Street and Mary Road, across from that, uh, that, uh, couple-floor office building. It is literally an empty lot right now, surrounded all by industrial.
Yeah. I mean, it fits in perfectly. Uh, we got the necessary variances, uh, to put it on there. We think it's a good use. We think it's positive. I can't tell you. I, I'm hopeful that maybe each one of them might, uh, produce a four or five jobs. This is, this is not three fifty-whatever Ivy Land Road. But, uh, it will be a very positive improvement, uh, to that area, uh, and I think it will serve the community well.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
I agree as well.
Okay, uh, that, that being...
I'm going to ask the public if the public has any comment or questions before we take any action. Okay, see, now, Mr. Bartle, if you want to craft a motion, would be great.
Yes, thank you. Uh, the, uh, the motion would be to, uh, move for the approval of resolution number, uh, two zero one eight dash forty-six, uh, for the applicants Bussinger, Bussinger, and Bussinger, uh, at, uh, six twenty-five Mary Street, uh, in the township.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Crowe, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Monroe, any further discussion? Any from the public? See any questions? See any, see any, no further, uh, question? I'm going to go ahead and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing our business to our town.
Of the board and all the residents of Warmminster Township, I wish you a Merry Christmas, a very happy, healthy, and prosperous new year.
Thank you.
Hope to see you next year.
Welcome to Warmminster.
I've been here before.
Steve's been here before. Steve knows where all the bones are buried, don't you, Steve? It's a little inside joke I have with Mr. Harris. Sometime I'd like to have lunch with you because I know you where the bones are buried. And Steve always says I buried them. All right, thank you, Mr. Harris, thank you. Okay, next up is item F, consider adoption of ordinance 752, duty tow ordinance amendment. I'm going to hand this all over to Mr. Schuster because we had a few bumps along the way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the agenda for this evening, you had authorized the advertisement of this ordinance. At this time, we're recommending that you not take any action on adopting that ordinance. And that is simply because the bid did go out. We received three responses. The three responses were reviewed by staff as well as the solicitor. And there were deficiencies in all three bids. And these were material deficiencies that we did not feel could be waived. So accordingly, we are recommending no action be taken tonight on the adoption of the amendment and the ordinance amendment, and to reject any and all, excuse you, all three of the bids that were received.
So that requires an action right now?
Correct.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. McPhillips, second?
Second.
Mr. Monroe, any discussion?
So this motion is to reject?
This is to reject.
Yes, means we're rejecting the bids.
Yes.
Does that mean we're going to be re-advertising down there?
That's my next thing right after you get done rejecting, yes.
We have to reject.
Just want to clarify for the public.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any comment?
Sure.
John Priolos, 674 Joseph Avenue, Warmminster, PA, also owner, operator of A-Z Auto Center. We had a couple bumps, I guess you would call them, that's how you go. During the mandatory bid meeting, it was asked of, I guess, the township that they would put together a punch list of everything that needed to be in the packet for the bid. When we got to that point, it became very difficult to decipher what was needed in the bid and what was actually, how it was supposed to go or be put back together. You guys assured us that everything would be itemized in that packet. Everybody pretty much made similar mistakes, which is, I guess, can happen. In the spec sheet for what you guys are doing, there was an Area 122, it's Further Inquiries. It says that Township Reserves the Right to Inquire into the responsibility of apparently successful bidder or whatever. And it's telling it that you can come back and ask us for any documents that you may need. Why didn't we exercise that situation where you went to all three of the bidders and said, okay, you're deficient in this area, this area, this area? And it didn't, you could have a little mandatory time to come put that back together and then review the bids and then do it. You guys said that you were going to make it as a list, and we would go down the punch list. Everything that was on your punch list was in the packet. What wasn't in the packet was, and I also had those questions, did we have to put our financials in there? Did we do this? That's why I called the township and talked to the township attorney to try to get some answers and some clarity as to what was going on. Basically, yes, there was things missing, but it wasn't on the punch list. And you guys promised us that it would happen that way. My question to you is, why don't you just go to all three of them, ask them to fix what they did, review it again, and award the bid? Instead of going through this whole process again. The insurance companies are getting back involved. You're talking to the agent, you're doing all the paperwork, and you're going back around. The only person or the only people that are really going to benefit from this is the township. All our bids are open, everyone knows what we did. And the only one that's going to get any more benefit out of it is you guys, because the bids are going to have to go up. And you'll get the benefit of that dollar, but it is what it is. So could you give me an example? I mean, you guys are the ones pulling the strings here, so.
Sure, happy to respond. I note that your bid was financially the highest bid.
Correct.
So your solution of going back to every single bidder, having them submit additional information, I understand why you would like that because that would award you the bid. However, the deficiencies, if I recall correctly, in your bid was that it was clearly stated in the specs that you had to have ten percent bid bond for both the primary year and the option year. And you only included the primary year.
Because
Well, excuse me, let me finish. You only included the primary year. That's not something that we can exactly overlook. You were non-compliant. So yes, there was a spec sheet, there was a checklist in there, but there was also specifications. And when you checked off, you know, having that check, you put the wrong amount on there. So you were non-compliant with the specs. In my opinion, I believe the solicitor's opinion, I'll let him opine, but that could leave us open to possible lawsuits from the bidders that didn't win, whom I claim that you were awarded it improperly. So that's, you know, we want to go through this process. We want it to be a fair and open process, and we want people that submit to do so in conformance of the specifications. And if there was some, if it wasn't clear, I apologize. We'll work to make sure that it is clear. We just want everyone to have a fair shot at this. But we can't ignore when someone puts in something that's not compliant with the bid specifications.
Yeah, I accept what you're saying. It's technically, technically, the verbiage was. And the reason why we didn't put the second dollar amount in there is because we thought that, second of all, we weren't awarded the second year because we would be appointed the second year and that the bond that we produced would be the guarantee for the second year if we didn't come up with the money at that time. And that's how I understood it, so.
I understand that if I recall the language, it was very explicit. And it said for both years, which is why we really can't waive that kind of inconsistency.
Well, that's fine. I'm not going to let them get it anyway, so just put it out there. See you next time.
See you next time, yes.
There is a motion and a second, but is there any other comments on the motion? Okay, seeing none, there's a motion and a second. I'm going to go ahead and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So now we have to go to consider authorization to advertise light duty tow bid, correct?
That is correct. Seeking the authorization, we would go ahead and put new dates in there, of course. I think what we're looking at right now would be a March 1st start date. So January and February would be the bid process and the awarding at your February meeting.
And why we're doing that, we just continue on normal rotation?
Yes, we're continuing the normal rotation, yes.
Okay, so is there a motion to authorize to advertise light duty tow bid 2018-12?
Motion.
Ms. Frescatore, is there a second? Mr. Monroe?
I'll say.
Any further discussion from the board? We've discussed this at great length already, we're just going back through it again. If there's any discussion for the public before we take action as well, we'd be glad to hear. Sure, please come up.
Yeah, my name is Mark Dutch, 100 York Road, Modern Auto and Collision. You're talking about extending the rotation. We are currently going to be out of contract the first of the year. There's no, nothing in place. There's no wording, there's no contract, nothing. So you're leaving the township wide open.
Do you have a contract now?
I do.
When was that contract awarded?
It's been a continuation of the fourteenth.
I think you're operating under an existing ordinance.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Which doesn't require a contract.
Okay.
So we don't have a contract with any of the vendors right now.
Well, we always call it, you know, a duty tow contract, so.
Now, you would operate under the existing ordinance.
On a rotation basis as it is now?
Yes, yeah, unchanged.
Well, we haven't got any, you know, paperwork to say who, what, where, and how.
Okay.
You're talking about running it into, what, March?
I believe March 1st would be the target start date, yes.
Okay, will we get something in writing to actually back that up?
Yeah, I'm sure that the police department will be in contact if they haven't already.
No, they haven't, so that's why I'm asking. You know, we have nothing so far. We got notification and an email that the bids were going to be rejected, but nothing further from there, so.
It didn't say in there that they were going to continue the rotation?
The police department would be in contact with us, but they haven't done anything.
Okay.
And we run into this in subsequent years before. That last month, they ran in and said, oh, we're going to roll it over and just do it again.
Okay.
So, you know.
We'll make sure someone gets
We'd like to know so we could plan what we have to plan too, you know.
Yeah, understood. And right now, we're saying we're continuing the rotation. I'll make sure the police department gets in contact with everybody.
Okay, now, what's going to happen with the repeal of the ordinance that's now in place? Does that have to be voted on yet or voted out?
No, so the board's not taking any action on that tonight. There's no, there would be no cause to go ahead and repeal that unless or until the bid is awarded.
So I'm going to understand, once that is repealed, then it's a brand-new contract? That's what you're bidding on?
So
That'll go away, the whole?
Concurrent with the bid being awarded,
Right.
the ordinance would be repealed at the same time.
Oh, okay, okay. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
There is a motion and a second, but if there's any other comment from the public or discussion, take it before we take action. Sure, please, Jack. No, not public comment, Jack. We still have a motion and a second. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. Now, Jack, public comment. Township residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda items subject to a five-minute guideline as recognized by the chair.
Good evening, Jack Diamond, Kent Road. I'm here to beat a dead horse in a way because apparently the issue of Shenandoah Woods has been on the back burner again, which is fine, that's where it belongs. But I just want to go on record that I've been objecting from the outset of the proposal. And it was implied that if you didn't do this, there would be a very undesirable end result. All I know is to spend a couple million dollars and spending the money, we wind up absorbing or taking on the liability. We have a solicitor. It seems to me there should be some way, when you're dealing with the government, you're on the short end. They always win no matter what. And they haven't done the correction that are, you know, necessary in other areas, short of funds or whatever it may be. But the point is, should it be sold, whether to us or anybody else? In my opinion, the liability should still lay on the government, should anything to do with mitigation, contamination, that sort of thing. But as I understand it, if it is sold, it becomes then the liability of the property owner, whether it's us or a builder. And if it's a builder, then it's still on the township rather than the government. And that's what I don't want to see happen. The, are the houses condemned? The buildings that there?
I know the property's been declared blighted, but I don't believe the, well, we don't have the authority to condemn on government property.
Well, that's part of my point, that I got the impression from the last meeting that I heard, which has been a little while, that that if it's, we have, you know, so-called good zoning. Actually, Warmminster has a reputation of sorts about its L and I in zoning. So nobody should be able to pull a Swifty on us. And anything that the government built was never up to normal or regional standards. They had their own standards and that's what they had to live by. Usually, they were for the better, but they had their own standards. But due to that, that doesn't mean that what's there that was built by their standards is in compliance with the new, and we've had several big upgrades of zoning. So it doesn't mean that what's there has to be carried over. And the last map that I saw, that you have rezoned it as R2. If somebody wants to buy it and put in R2, that's wonderful. I'd be glad to see it. But I certainly can't see spending, the taxpayer spending millions of dollars and then letting it sit fallow to boot. That's a bad news situation. So just my two cents worth, because you said this is on the back burner, but it seems like the intent of both this board and previous boards over a number of years has been for the township, one way or another, to adopt that property. And bad news, if you ask me, due to the contamination. If the government's going to continue dealing with it, it's another story. But if it's sold, whether to a private builder or to us, then we get the headache. And that's what I oppose. That's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Jack. Please, come up.
So I'm Patty Crossen, I have 209 Ann Lane. So here's my thing, it's with the tax increase. So I have elderly neighbors on a strict budget, very strict budget. That's important to me. It's important to me to pick up the phone, hit 911, and police officers come to my house. So I find out that, residents don't know this, that within two years, we'll be bankrupt if we don't have a huge tax increase. Right? So why, maybe two years, three years, I'm not, so why the past four, five, six years has there not been small increases in the taxes so that it doesn't burden people so that I can not be jeopardized by calling my local police and having them show up if I need assistance or anything like that? And I am holding you guys accountable for this. Why was there not any form of tax increase in the past several years? And now we're at a point now that we could be bankrupt. You're going to give the biggest tax increase that they can possibly give, which people cannot afford. And I don't find it acceptable. I don't think that you're putting the Warmminster residents ahead of yourselves. And that's what you're here to do. So why has there not been?
Well, I'll start off with, last year, there was a motion here to do a small tax increase in January that there was no second on. No second means no vote.
Okay, and the year before that? And the year before that?
The year before that and the year before that, we had a very healthy fund balance and a balanced budget. Seventeen slightly out of balance, correct, Mr. Schuster?
That is correct, yes.
But prior to that, how do I go to you, the resident, and say, I want to raise your taxes? I have a balanced budget and a extremely healthy fund balance.
You do say that, because
Because we did.
So your police fund is fully capable of standing on its own? Are you telling me that, that me being able to have a policeman come to my house if I'm in danger was never, there's never any issue with their pension or anything like that? Everything's, it's all paid for?
Sure, there have been pension issues, and we have made
And that's what you need to address. People need to know that. People need to know that. We're almost bankrupt.
Okay, I'm going to draw back a little, let's calm down and take a breath. For the last six years, every time we've adopted a budget, I have sat up here and said, do you know what an MMO is, by the way, Minimum Municipal Obligation? I have sat up here and you can pull the tapes. This is growing. This has to be dealt with. I'm only one board member here. I'm only one board member. Have we had a pension issue? Yes, we have, and it's growing. And we could go back and point fingers back 20 years of how that happened.
Right, the stock market, all the, I get that.
I'm not in the business of doing that.
But we're not back there, but I'm saying this past increase right now is one of the biggest ever. You'll never be able to do it again.
We haven't taken action on that yet.
We haven't.
We haven't taken action on that yet.
Did you three vote for it to increase taxes? Did you say you wanted to do it?
Advertise.
Advertise.
Just cross it. We advertised at the top, but that allows us to do anything between zero and the top.
But did you put it out there? Because it's out there.
Well, we have to put it out there. We've been transparent about the fact that we believe that it's possible that tax increase would be required to act like it wouldn't be and not put out that in a scenario where you could see that type of increase and say, oh, that's not really going to what happened. We must be upfront about that. So yes, we did advertise a budget that included up to that amount.
But do you see the concern?
Absolutely, I'm going to pay it too.
I'm saying that nothing, no, I'm saying that nothing's been done for years. No increase, I don't care who the blame is. So a $30 or $40 increase is much different than a $400 increase. And then to jeopardize my ability to have, you know, policemen come and help me if I need it, or my elderly neighbors being able to buy groceries, I don't think you see it. I don't think, because if you did see it, you guys would have made the right decision and had small increases over the years that could have been budgeted. That's what you should have done. You should have looked at everybody around you, all the residents, and said, you know what? What would be easier for this family to budget? Not $400, $30. But you didn't do that. Be accountable. That's all I'm asking, that you tell these residents that we're almost bankrupt, that you can't afford to pay our policemen.
We've been talking about that for six years.
They don't know. They don't know. I never heard the word bankrupt about Warmminster Township. I had not heard that.
Well, you need to go back through the minutes because I've been talking about it for a couple of years.
And what have you done about it?
Well, I proposed raising taxes last year.
So that's what you did. You propose, and if nobody agrees, then we say, oh, well, we're not going to give our policemen pensions.
We looked at evaluating an asset of ours to fund that pension. We had a meeting at the high school, and 400 people screamed at us, raise our taxes, don't do this. Well, this is Plan B.
But you didn't raise them.
This is Plan B.
That meeting was in January of this past year, man.
And last year?
Yes.
Last year, there was, we did not raise the taxes.
So it has nothing to do with the fact that you said, when you guys ran, that you were not going to raise taxes? And you did not raise taxes. You did not raise taxes.
I never said that. Man, I never said that. You can go back to 2013. I've lived my life online. You could see every word I wrote. I know you're online, I've seen your posts.
Yeah, because I hold you accountable for this, for this huge increase, for jeopardizing our police.
First of all, the pension issue, our major issue is the pension, the underfunding of the pension. We're not going to go back and point why we were underfunded. We have to find a way to close that pension hole. Now, either you do it through taxes, you sell assets. And that's what we've been debating for years. Nobody's come to an agreement yet. Your police will still show up in 2019. They'll still show up in 2020. They're coming there. The police are receiving their pensions. Those retired cops are receiving their pensions. What we are looking for is a solution that closes the hole for good. A tax increase would only delay further action.
So why would you suggest it then? If it's not going to be
But why would I take that off the table as an option? You're asking me to tie my hands and commit to only one option.
No, I'm asking that you've already failed Warmminster. You've already, we're already in this hole. I'm asking you to find a solution. we're already in this hole, I'm asking you to find a solution that's going to work, and this tax increase isn't going to work, it's, it's going to work for five years, six years?
I agree.
And then we're in the same dump again.
We have to come up with a permanent solution to the, to pension crisis, and tax is not the solution, correct?
But I feel like you're sitting up there acting like you've done a fantastic job, and I don't see it.
Ma'am, you just said you started coming to the meeting, started paying attention, and I appreciate it, and I want you to come, and I want you to hold us accountable.
And you want to know why I'm here, because I couldn't believe, I can't, I said, "What do you mean, we're going to be bankrupt?", that is not possible.
You're entitled to your opinion about our, our job performance, and, and I, I'm not going to argue it.
So you're not accountable, is that what you're telling me?
I'm completely accountable, ma'am, I'm more accountable than most people who've sat in this seat, I have answered the question. And I will, and if, if something goes wrong, you all can come up here and yell at me, and I take it.
If it goes wrong, it's gone wrong, their pension, you can't rely on the stock market or whatever, you have to have a plan five years ago, four years ago, you should have had a plan, but did you think it was going to magically correct itself?
Perhaps we should talk about 2009, go back to the root of it.
Right. Go ahead.
Well, it's 2018 now, have you, you've been sitting there for four years, and you've been
No, I've been sitting for longer than that.
Have you been cracking your brain and thinking of a solution?
I'd like to, can I, can I, can I tell a story?
And I, I know I passed my five minutes, so I'll sit down.
That's okay, no, it's fine, it's fine.
I would, I'd just like, I'd like to tell a story, sometimes I tell cop stories, sometimes I tell Navy stories, so I'm going to tell a Navy story. When I first got on board the USS Theodore Roosevelt, I was, basically, I was in a department that was responsible for the care and safety and security of the missiles and weapons and whatnot, I wasn't in charge, I was a brand-new person, so I just was, I was brand-new there, and somebody lost a key, and I walked into a room full of men that were yelling and screaming at each other, that were pointing fingers at each other, and even at that young age, I don't know how old I was, twenty, twenty-one or something like that, I knew that they were wasting their energy, and what they needed to do was stop the finger pointing and find the damn key, and I think what we need to do as a board today is we need, I mean, you're right, long-term solution, that's absolutely what we need as a board, I look forward to, to doing something today that, that is going to begin to tackle those issues, and that's what I think that we need to be focused on, everybody's residents, as board members, taxpayers, everybody, we need to focus on fixing it.
Long-term solution, excuse me, is, is, as far as the pension funds are concerned, short of a large-scale injection into that pension fund would be state pension reform. This is, these are state mandated pensions, we get to build the end of the year, here's what you have to put in there.
Well, they're well-deserved, I mean
Absolutely, I'm not saying they're not.
You know what, if somebody's, most people are running from an area, they're running to it, that means it's well-deserved.
Absolutely.
I, I just, it's not that, I just don't think you're doing what you need to be doing, I just, I mean, I'm entitled to that opinion, and I do find you accountable.
Okay, and I accept that, I do. Anyone else with public comment? Sure, Ed, good to see you tonight, Ed, by the way.
Good evening, I'm Ed Toyfer, President of Hartsfield Fire Company, and I understand you're going to consider giving us an unfunded mandate, perhaps, for workman's compensation. To Hartsfield Fire Company, it's twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and I thought I'd come down and explain to you a couple of things that happened, that's happening to fire companies across the state, but it's happening to us local, in this past year, we lost ten thousand dollars because the fund drive for the ambulance overlapped the fire company just by two weeks, but we didn't communicate, we didn't know they were going to do their thing, and what it cost us was about a third of our, our normal thirty thousand dollar income, or ten thousand bucks. The second thing that's happened, and it's ongoing now, with the State Fire Relief Association. State Fire Relief Association, as you possibly know, every time there's a fire insurance policy written in the state of Pennsylvania, the tax is two percent, that two percent goes into a fund that's redistributed back through the township, which comes back to the fire companies. Someone in Harrisburg, probably five years ago, changed the system a little bit, and what they did is began accepting this, I understand it, and I got, I spoke into Frank Farrey about this, our state representative, who's also a fire chief, and I spoke to someone from Megan Schroeder's office this afternoon, who called Harrisburg and got a very, very similar story, in that, when a policy comes in in Harrisburg, and it doesn't say the word "fire" on it, it says home, uh, insurance policy, with all-encompassing policy, that policy and the two percent that it comes with that policy goes into a different fund, and I understand that fund may very well be something to do with someone's pension fund somewhere along the line, so someone's taking what, in my opinion, is fire-related volunteer fire service funds and giving them to someone else, to the tune of six to seven million fire policies a year have been diverted, so we're not talking a minor piece of change here, we're talking significant amounts of money across the state of Pennsylvania. As it affects Hartsfield Fire Company, our income from state funds, relief association funds, five years ago, were somewhere around ninety-two thousand dollars, this year, it's sixty-two thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars, just to our fire company, to give you some idea, the people in Harrisburg have made some kind of a decision that they don't realize that, believe it or not, this is what they said, and they said it to both representatives, that when those policies come in, they don't say "fire", they actually are told, telling the people who are questioning the system, that those people are not taking fire insurance anymore. Can you imagine six to seven million people, fire insurance policies in, in the state of Pennsylvania that are not having fire insurance? I find that absurd, I think it's a terrible excuse, but I believe what they're telling, there's a little word, and they use this word "check", if, when someone fills out the policy and they don't check "fire", the money goes somewhere else. That's two significant sources of income that we're losing, if we get another unfunded mandate, it's just going to add to our problems. While I'm here tonight, I thought you'd like, give you some other information, as you read in the paper, volunteerism is slowly declining, and its pace seems to be picking up, over the last two years in Hartsfield Fire Company, we haven't gotten one applicant, we went two full years before we got an older member, who's fifty years old and come back into the organization, he broke the streak. We advertised, this past spring, we sent a fund drive, not a fund drive, but actually a recruiting letter out to every citizen in our first response area, so everyone got a, a letter brochure that includes forty-five hundred people, we got zero out of that, we thought it was worth a shot, give them a explanation of who we are and what we do, and that's the way it is today. It's unfortunate, but there's a decline in volunteerism, the spirit's not there like it used to be, I, I would say that the spirit within the people who are currently involved in the fire service is as strong as ever, the numbers keep going down, we keep doing the job, but as guys like me age out, the system's going to keep going, and I hate to say it like this, but you have a paid police department, you don't have a volunteer police department, you have a paid ambulance corps, you don't have a volunteer ambulance corps anymore, you have a volunteer fire service, and if we don't treat them nice or try to encourage them or do all we can to try to promote it, we're going to lose them too, and I, I have people at county meetings saying this, this, this is a problem, I mean, it's really looking, looking like it's going that way. On top of all that, I would like to say that since I'm involved in code enforcement and whatnot, that we need to be aggressive with use in occupancy inspections here in a township, when we inspect a home, it's the greatest opportunity to upgrade the safety of that home, if you're in your bedroom and sleep at night, and we, Mormonster Township puts a smoke detector in everyone's bedroom ceiling, that's great, but that smoke detector's only going to go off when there's smoke in that bedroom, if there's smoke in the basement or the garage or somewhere else in the house, and you're sleeping in your bedroom, you're not going to know it, because you're not going to hear the detector in the basement or garage, they need to be interconnected, technology is now ten years old, with wireless technology, to make sure that when you're home, if you're home alone, picture your home alone and sleeping, and you've got smoke in the house, and your detector don't ring, you're in deep trouble, and you can't expect the fire department to make a difference, it has to be in the structure, other townships are doing it, they're putting interconnected detectors in every time they do use in occupancy, it takes a little time, it takes, to be aggressive with this whole thing, but I think we're missing a boat every time we sell a home. I, I wish you all a Merry Christmas, but I didn't come with a lot of good news, unfortunately.
I just want to, just on that, on your last note about interconnected, uh, uh, fire alarms, speaking to Joe Velton, who's in the back, back there, sometime ago, I've got two little kids, and one of my things that always kind of kept me up at night was just the fear of a fire that ever ripped through the house, and the, the moment I went out, I kind of went a little overboard, and I got bought like nine of them, I think, and that, what, you know, nine in one shot was a lot, you don't have to start off with nine, but I got nine of them, and I set them up, and I mean, I've slept like a baby ever since.
The peace of mind to that whole thing.
Absolutely, it's, it's worth it just for that reason.
Yep, yep, if I had my little can of smoke here, I'd blow it at the detector, and it takes such a small amount of smoke, but if you don't know what's going on, you're at risk. Any thoughts, any questions, I would, I would encourage someone to get ahold of their state people and get the answer, but don't take the answer that six to seven million policy holders no longer have fire insurance, I don't believe that, I believe there's a whole lot going on. Okay?
Thank you, Ed, have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Sure, John, a moment, please.
Again, John Freo, with 674 Joseph Avenue, Mormonster, PA. We had a, a tenant in our complex that, I guess, had some problems financially and had to leave his building, the owner of the property came and took control of the property again, so, with that situation, became a, a number of issues with him and emails to Jeff, my landlord, and myself about all kinds of different things, so we, we tried to work with the, the, the present landowner, and it got very difficult, I mean, with the threats that he was pulling, basically, the first thing after he came back was that he said right away, "You have a property, you have a parking problem, and I want to sell you my property on the following street, and that would solve your problem", so I met with him, I talked to him, of course, it's too much money, I won't, won't buy it, so, what happened was, there was a lack of communication from, from his side, other than just the threat, so you, when someone's threatening you, telling you they're going to run tow trucks, he called Wesley's, they're running down the street and doing all kinds of stuff, saying he was going to take, take the, take vehicles off the street, and then it, then it ended up being his, the stuff in his parking lot, and I had, I tried to get the, curtail of the, the whole problem with, with, with this guy by making sure my guys weren't parking there and stuff, and he would come by and somebody from a, a, you know, a, a vendor or something would pull in the parking lot or whatever, here and there, so, everything the guy had asked me to do from the day he came in, I, I was working on it, I was moving the vehicles, I was doing this, like, you know, because it was an adjustment, because I had the, the guy that was in there, I did work for him for the snow removal, and he gave me use of the back parking lot, which was out of his way, so, once the new guy came in, I understood, it's his property, he, he's got to say, and we understood what he wanted, he didn't want cars parked in front of his building, he's got a million-dollar building there, he wants to sell it, so he wants it to make it look right, so, we, we, we did that, we cleaned the cars off the front, we don't put them in front of his building, we stop, we try to stop people, we don't want our guys or our help parking in his parking lot, then we got down to the, down to the last thing, where he just kept going, one thing to the next, to the next, to the next, and we had some issues trying to communicate with him, so, what had happened was, the last thing was, "Oh, your, your, the, the front end of your car is over the property line on my side", so, boom, so, that came the next, "Well, we're going to take legal action, we're going to do this, this is what you're doing wrong now", blah, 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 so, what had happened is, at that point, I, I understood what the guy was saying, and, and I get it, so we went out there, I got all my, I got a couple of the guys, Shirley got one of her guys, we cut all the pallets up that were sitting in between the, the, the grass property, we threw them all out, we went back in there, I cleaned even his side up where all the brush was overgrown for the last ten years that the other guy didn't do, I cleaned up all the, the little bits and pieces in the trash, it blew out of the trash can, cleaned it up, and then the superintendent came, so, once the superintendent came, I went out and I met him, I shook his hand, and I sat and told him my position, and told him what I wanted to do and how I was going to do it, and when I was finished cleaning up the property, I was going to take pictures of it and send it to more
John, what does this have to do with us?
Well, this is the situation.
I have to ask.
I have to go, I'm telling you, this is what's going on, because now, okay, so, but now he, he creates a parking problem out in the street, so, we understand that there was some kind of traffic study, I, I guess, was going to be asked to get done or whatever, the neighbors, Shirley and Mrs. Biggs, Mrs. Biggs wrote a letter, their concern was the fact that the, the township didn't give them any communication or a chance to have their voice heard in, in the situation, so, Mrs. Biggs wrote a letter, I, she told me to, to, to give it to, to Mr. Schuster tonight, and Shirley's here, she has some concerns about some of the things that happened with the, you know, the parking signs and stuff, so, come on up, Shirley, and you can talk to him, I'll give this to, pass that over to Greg.
Sure.
So we're, we're fixing, I'm, I'm good with him now, so, I, I got it all taken care of, I got his phone number, I have a contact person, so, everything, and the guy was happy, he thought there was going to be a confrontation, but there isn't, so everything's good that way.
I'm from J.A. Smith Heating and Air Conditioning on 360 Patricia Drive, John's one of our tenants, I'm under the impression that this gentleman put no parking signs on our property up and down the street, I don't think the township put them there. This past Friday, I had, first in the morning, a police officer came to our, our office and said, "As of Monday, if you have people parking on your front, in front of the building on the street, you'll get ticketed", I'm like, "Okay", so, come Friday afternoon, I had another police officer show up at our building and said, "If, we're just letting you know, if someone parks as of Monday, you can get ticketed and even towed away", I'm like, "This is our property, why should we", we were never notified that these parking, no parking signs were being put on our bill, on our property in front of our, our building, I, we've had, we've been in this property for like thirty years.
Excuse me, can I, can I ask a quick question? When you say the no park, are they actually on the street, or are they
No, they're actually on our, the front of our lawn.
Okay, so the parking that's occurring is on the property, not on the street?
Well, I guess he put the parking signs at the, the bottom of our lawn, saying, "No parking in this area", like on the street.
Okay.
So
I, I just want to clarify, because that's not something that we control, we control parking on the street.
Right, but I, my question is, did he put these signs up on our property, or was this posted by the township?
I, I can tell you, I can't tell you who did it, I can tell you it wasn't us, because we don't post no parking on private property.
Right, so that's, okay, so, my concern is, if this gentleman is putting these park, no parking signs up on our property, and Mrs. Biggs across the street, and then he's calling the, the police, and the police coming to our building and say, "You can't park here, you'll, you're, you'll get either a ticket or we'll have somebody tow them away", so that's our concern with the township, so
I mean, we, we can look into that, I mean, it sounds more like a civil matter, you know, certainly, if there's a trespassing issue, you know, someone, someone does, I believe, have the right to, you know, prohibit people from parking on their private property, and if that's occurring, you know, that, I don't, I don't think there's a problem with that, if they're saying that you can't park on your property
Right.
Now, when you say your property, do you own the property?
Yes, we own the property, and
Okay.
Like I said, about a year and a half ago, all of a sudden, we noticed these no parking signs were put in, up and down our street, and
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know what to say to that, that, you know
Right, so that's why, you know, in the beginning, we thought it was the township put them there.
And, and we were made aware that they were there not too long ago, correct?
I think someone had mentioned that.
And then, like I said, come Friday, this past Friday, I had two police officers show up at our office and saying, you know, "We, we've got a notice, I guess, from Mr. Hankin, saying that if you have people parking in front of your building on, in the street, we can come ticket you or even have them towed away",
Public streets.
And, and as far, and we're like
Yeah, cer-
We're, we're under, understanding, this is, yeah, a public street that
So
We should be able to park in front of our building.
On public streets, the fault of it is you can park there, unless it's prohibited by ordinance, there is no ordinance prohibiting parking on that street.
Right, right, okay, so that, that's, that's our concern is, no, cannot, since it's not by the township, can we take these, these no parking signs down then?
Can I, can I ask a question, because I, I think maybe at one point, there's a little bit of a confusion, so, the no parking signs, they, they're not like offset back, like in, next to some like parking lot in the middle of your property?
No, no.
These are temporary no parking signs, I don't know what they're made out of, but they were, they were posted
Posted right at the curb, posted right at the curb line.
Right along the curb of the public roadway.
Correct, and what the situation is, there's only really four businesses back there in that industrial industrial park. And for 20 years, I've been back there, nobody's had a problem with parking in the street. We offload tractor trailers and things like that back there and.
Well, I mean, and my question is, is can, I mean, if.
Go out there tomorrow morning with a shovel and take that sign.
If that were my property, I'd go out there tomorrow morning.
That was my concern, is like, I was on.
Go ahead. If it's your, now, if it's your property.
Right, yes.
Right.
Yeah, we've been the, the building.
If, if it's, if it's your property, you can remove the signs.
Okay.
If, if it's your property.
Right, yes, it is.
Yeah, we're not, you know, she's, the neighbors aren't trying to cause any real issue here. We just want to, we want dialogue with, with, with Mr. Hankin so we can understand what he, where he's coming from. I think I got a pretty good handle on it with the superintendent and it got through to him and he was very happy with all the things that happened. So the last thing that we have hanging here is this issue with him calling and emailing about the, the issues about the parking in the street.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
So we, what we're trying to say is, all the neighbors in the, in the neighborhood, I do, I do all the snow removal back there, I take care of everybody back there. Anytime anybody needs anything, they call me, I get it done. And he, you know, he thinks, you know, that, I guess he thinks he still owns the streets.
Right, like, yeah, that was my concern, having the police officers come to our building.
Well, they're public roads, he does not own the streets.
Yeah, I mean, it's the point where I'm having police officers come to our door and say.
What, but, yeah, that's my question, is why would that happen? I mean, are we, are we 100% sure, like, the water authority didn't put these up or the township definitely didn't put these up?
We, we didn't put them up. We don't put up no parking on, on private roads.
Mr. Hankin did. He put them up.
He put them up.
He posted the whole street.
So is there, is there any enforcement?
Are the police responding to public roads, to parking on public roads?
Well, it sounds like it's, the response was on private property.
No, well, that, the original.
No.
He was worried, he was worried about, he was worried about taking control of his own property, which we gave him the right. We know he owns it, so we did everything he asked us to do, so there's no issues now. I went through the whole thing and cleared everything out that Bob left there. I got his empty oil tanks out of there and things like that. I did more than, than he had asked for. But the issue was, moving forward, I know that he's contacted the township about the parking in the street and our concern is, no one else in the neighborhood has an issue except for him.
Okay.
Okay?
So what, what I'll do is, I'll talk to the police, you know, there could have been a misunderstanding where an officer got called out there, saw the no parking sign and assumed that there was no parking. But cer-, but certainly, they can only enforce what's been adopted by ordinance.
Correct.
And right now, there is no ordinance prohibiting parking on that street.
Correct, because that's the way, that's the way the neighbors want to keep it too.
I mean, I, I don't want.
The neighbors need to have a say in it. They didn't have a say in it.
I, I have a reverse question. I mean, if somebody's putting up signs on their own along a public roadway.
That could be trespassing, yeah.
Well, number one, that's what my point is, is there any kind of enforcement? I mean, we can't have people doing that around the township.
I agree. I don't know what the law is on that, but wouldn't surprise me if there was something prohibi-, I mean, imagine if someone said, "Random, put up a stop sign."
Right, you have to catch them in the act.
Yeah, so.
That's my, that's my point. I mean, I think that there's something that we got to look at.
Right, right, yeah, I mean, I didn't want to risk our employees, if they park in front of our building on the street there, they come back from the job and they get a ticket and next thing you know, the police officer said, "No, we could also tow your truck, your vehicles away."
Especially if he's putting the signs up and then calling in a complaint on the signs that he put up.
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah, that's.
That is what it sounds like.
And it's a waste of, it's a waste of law enforcement, of our police officers' time.
Mr. Hankin has a long and rich history with the township.
Yes, we know, we know, but we wanted.
But I just wanted to verify that these weren't township signs that I had taken them.
Okay, well, the one, if the ground is going to be incredibly soft tomorrow with all this rain, I would remove that immediately, first thing tomorrow morning.
All right.
And if it shows back up, call us.
Yes.
Yeah, well, we just wanted to make it clear, we don't want any enemies. We have a good standing with, with the neighbors in that, in that thing. And we want to continue and maybe make some friends with, with Mr. Hankin. We did a lot for him this week and we're, we're looking to continue doing, you know, doing what he, if he doesn't want people parking in front of his building, we won't park here. It's as simple as that. We'll, we'll honor his request, he has the right, it's his, it's his, it's his house and we'll take, you know, if he's going to take care of it, we'll take care of it for him, okay?
You're being good neighbors, hopefully you all.
We're trying to be good neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, it was just, I'm like, boy, I threw him one day, I had two police officers at my office in one day, it was like, this is like, a little overkill.
All right, guys.
We got it, we got it.
Thank you.
Timer's got you. All right, any other public comment?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you too, John. Any other public comment? First round of public comments, see none, we're going to go to consent agenda, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very light consent agenda for this evening. Item A is approval of the minutes from your November 27th meeting. Item B is awarding the bid for winter rock salt to Morton Salt Inc. in the amount of $47.92 per ton delivered and $47 flat per ton undelivered as bid through the Bucks County Consortium. And item C is 900 York Road, the sewage facilities planning module approval.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Simult.
Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Monroe, any questions on the consent agenda? Comments, any from the public? See none, I call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Next item six is finance report, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have in your packet the transfers and bills list, so I would ask for a motion to approve the November transfers. The supplemental bill list dated November 30th, 2018, in the amount of $741,640.60 and the bill list dated December 20th, 2018, in the amount of $1,199,225.60.
Is there a motion?
Simult.
Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fraskator, sorry. Is there any discussion on the bill list? Any discussion from the public on the motion? See none, call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item B, November financial statement, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have the November financial statement in your packet. Rather than highlight a few things, I'd rather just cut to the chase. Our finance director, John Markarelli, who's here this evening, has spent the la-, today crunching numbers and tried to give you a sense of where we're going to finish at the end of this year. I know it could play into your discussions with the budget for 2019. At the moment, we are over budget on revenue by approximately $470,000, so that's, that's fairly good. Expenses are coming in slightly under budget, $25,000. Again, that, this is to budget, there was a significant budget, deficit budgeted. So what we're projecting right now, and again, this is with the numbers we have right now and there's still other things that are going to be coming in, but it's looking like our fund balance from 2017 to 20, sorry, 2018 into 2019 would drop from 3.5 million to 2.2 million. So an approximate 1.3 million dollar deficit that would be realized in 2018. That also includes, or is assuming, that the budget amendment, which you have on your agenda next, is adopted. Those numbers are included in that deficit.
Okay. Any comment on that from the board? Everybody got it?
Mm-hmm.
Next up is item C, budget amendment 2018, number five, resolution 2018-47, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, the second-class township code provides for amendments to the budget after the first three months of the fiscal year have elapsed. This would be the fifth and final amendment of the year. It does a number of things. First, it cleans up a few accounts by moving money from various line items, a floor report is in your packet. I will call attention to a rather sizable chunk of money, about $350,000, that's being moved from the general fund. $150,000 of that is going to the highway fund. That is because we've run out of money in that fund because of all the accidents that have been occurring that have been taking out our traffic signals. Now, we do get some of this money back when we go through the subrogation process, the insurance process. Sometimes the, that can take a while and as we're finding, there are sometimes that the motorist is uninsured. We're in a case right now with, with Dibbit where someone did cause substantial damage, I think it was over $75,000 or $100,000 damage, and they were uninsured. So we have to go ahead and repair those, those signals and we've just run out of money in that fund. Again, we're hopeful that we will get more money back in that fund when insurance proceeds come.
There was a real uptick in that this year, there were several lights taken out this year.
It's like they can't miss them. There's just unbelievable amount of traffic signals that get taken out.
So that money comes directly out of our funds, out of an account, but.
Yeah, it's like a revolving account, so we have money in there, we go ahead and we pay for the repairs and then the insurance proceeds flow into there.
From the other people.
From the other people, yes.
Is there, is there any way of, like, insuring traffic lights? Is there, is there a process for that?
Well, we do have insurance on it, yeah.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but only if it hits a certain deductible.
Gotcha.
Yes, I mean, there's $10,000 deductible, you know, I mean, there's $10,000 deductible, but the, we're not, the, it's caused by other people, it's not caused by us. So our insurance wouldn't pick that up unless we caused the damage.
Okay.
And so what we're going is, we're going and subrogating and trying to get those, those proceeds back as best we can.
And before we take action on this, and on a lighter note, before we get to the budget, there was one in particular that was taken out not too long ago. Late night, the teenager took the car, runs into the light and I asked the officer, "Was the teenager okay?" He said, "The accident fine, when his mother arrived, she beat the daylights out of him." We were worried about his, about his health when his mother arrived. But that, it's been, there's been a tremendous uptick in that this year, it's remarkable that lights that have been taken out this year.
You see those, those boxes, the controller boxes, those are incredibly expensive. Eric, do you, do you know off the top of your head how much those are, those boxes?
Over $100,000.
Yeah, one was taken out, I think Veterans Way, right, John? You did the toe, yeah.
Greg, may I ask typically, how long does it take for us to recoup the money back when you subrogate from the insurance company? What's, what's the norm?
It, it depends. I mean, if it's a pretty straightforward accident, it happens pretty quickly, you know, probably, and John would have a better idea, probably within a couple of months. These are very simple claims and, you know, there's really no debate a lot of times. Now, sometimes you'll get a delay if insurance companies are arguing. So if it's a two-car accident and one of them happened to go ahead and slam into the device, then you might have an argument between the two insurance companies, which one is more liable, you know, to go ahead and pay for it. So that could lengthen the process.
Okay.
And of course, if you have someone that's uninsured, that could, that could take a while. In this case, I don't want to get to the, the details of this case, although he was uninsured, he was driving for a business at the time. So we are going after the business.
Okay.
You know, so we go ahead and do everything we possibly can. But there, you know, the lead time, not, not very long, except for those exceptional cases, where it can take a while.
Thank you.
Okay, so there, I'm going to ask for a motion, right?
Well, let me finish my explanation. The other $200,000 of that 350 was to move over into the, the capital fund. That is to cover engineering costs and this money should have been moved in 2017, at the end of 2017, and never got moved over. So what we've been doing is drawing down the fund balance there, which is actually a reserve grant fund, so go ahead and replenishing it, moving money that should have been moved in 2017 over there. In the general fund, there are multiple items that you'll see on there being moved around. It is budget neutral though. Library fund, the same, budget neutral. Parking wreck, there are multiple items. It is mo-, it is budget neutral except for an additional $30,000 for the tree escrow. As you know, we've been battling the Emerald Ash war for a while now. And you'll see a very minor liquid fuels transfer, which is also budget neutral.
Okay, now it's time to ask, call for motion. I want to ask for a motion to adopt amendment 2018, number five, resolution 2018-47. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, second?
Second.
Mr. McPhillips, any further discussion? Any from the public? See none, call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the motion carries. Before we move on to unfinished business, which is our budget, and I'm sure it's going to be a lengthy discussion, I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a brief recess, because I, I can use the boys' room, so. Thank you. Okay, going to reconvene tonight's meeting and we're up to number seven, which is unfinished business, which is adoption of 2019 budget. And I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Schuster to start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, myself and the staff have been going through a long process to develop the 2019 budget. The process started throughout the summer with input from department heads, giving their proposed budgets, having back and forth discussions, making changes, and eventually coming forward with a township manager proposed budget, which I did deliver to you. The board had at least one budget workshop as well as other meetings where the budget was discussed. At your last meeting, you decided to put forth a proposed budget that was duly advertised in accordance with the second-class township code. That proposed budget, I'll give a brief summary of that. It does increase the general fund mill rate from 11.09 to 18.38. Accordingly, it also requires court approval because you'd be exceeding the 14-mill cap on second-class townships. It would increase the fire tax mill rate from 1.25 to 1.48. That is to keep the fire companies whole with the transfer of workers' comp over to that, that fund, which is the appropriate place for that. There needs to be some additional revenue to come in to make sure the fire companies do get the same level of spending. This budget also eliminates two positions, however, does keep our main operations intact. It does fund the police pension at the market value, which as you know, is the appropriate value to fund the pension. It does not use any fund balance and eliminates the deficit. If this budget were adopted, the use of the operating reserve in 2018 would be recommended by me to help improve the MMO for 2019 and beyond. As you're aware, we're coming up on a valuation cycle that begins next year, so getting that money into the pension fund would be of benefit to us. And this tax increase and this budget is consistent with what the budget committee has recommended. I have been asked to put together two alternative budgets just in the last couple of days. One alternative would be a cap of five mills on the total increase. That budget would increase the general fund mill rate from 11.09 to 15.86. It would still require court approval as it exceeds the 14-mill cap. It would increase the fire tax mill rate again from 1.25 to 1.48. It would eliminate two positions, as I said before, but keep the main operations intact. It would also fund the police pension at market value. However, it would have a deficit of approximately $785,000. That deficit, if realized, would have to come from fund balance. If that structural deficit remains, there would have to be future increases in revenues or decreases in expenditures as that fund balance declines. If you were to adopt that budget, I would be hesitant to recommend using the operating reserve in 2018 because I'd be concerned that the piece of that safety net would be taken away. I'd also note that this is not consistent with what the budget committee recommended. The final alternative that I was asked to put together was one that had no tax increase. If that were the case, all mill rates would remain the same. Court approval would not be required. The projected deficit in that case would be 2.3 million dollars, which would have to come from fund balance unless remedial action is taken. As I just reported, that's the approximate amount that is left in the fund balance at the conclusion of 2018. In order to make, in order to keep from running out of money, we would have to explore significant reductions in expenditures to not use up all of that fund balance. Almost certainly, we would not be able to fund the police pension as we should on the market value method, but would have to do it on the smoothing method. That would be a short-term savings of at least, of approximately $500,000, but of course, have long-term negative impacts. As I said, that would still eliminate those two positions. As I said, that would still eliminate those two positions. There is, we had an expected police vacancy that should be occurring in February. I would not fill that position. We would also have to look at other positions as the year went on, as we had to go ahead and draw down our expenses. And without the increase to the fire fund, the effective support to the fire companies would decrease. You would start 2020 with a low fund balance, if you had a fund balance at all. Also, if we went down this path, I would start a dialogue with D C E D to prepare for entry into the Act 47 program. If you went down this path, I would not recommend, of course, using operating reserve in 2018. If you're gonna have such a large structural deficit, you need that safety net in place to stave off insolvency. And of course, as I said prior, with the other budget, the other alternative, this is not consistent with the recommendations of the Budget Committee.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna start off, because I'm the one that asked you to prepare alternate budgets. I realize, and I think the rest of the board does, too, that 7.7 point...
It would be a... Do you want to know the, the total one? 7.52.
Five-two. Along with the trash hauling fees that are going up, which are completely out of our control, that sealed bid, is excessive and a little burden on the folks. So I asked, Greg, could you prepare an alternate budget of a five-mill increase? It, it doesn't fully fund our budget and close the gap all the way, but it buys us plenty of room and time to, to work on long-term solutions. It funds our pension as need be, and it funds our firemen as need be as well. That's, that's why I've asked to prepare that. The, the no-tax increase, that's also an option as well. I, I have something prepared here that I want to go over, that some of you were here at the last meeting, some of you weren't, so I'm gonna review it again. In 2011, there was a five-mill tax increase by the previous board. None of us were here then. At that time, it was the largest tax increase in the history of the township, correct? It was. In my opinion, because I was involved then, there wasn't a whole lot done to cut costs prior to that tax increase. So I, I'll be honest with you, what this board has done to cut costs before we come to you, the folks, to bridge the gap. In 2009, there were 54 sworn officers in Warmminster Townships, six full-time civilian staff, not nine part-time desk clerks, and seven crossing guards. In 2018, there are 43 sworn officers, full-time, four full-time civilian staff, part-time desk clerks and crossing guards positions have been eliminated. Public Works, two positions have been eliminated in the last two years. L and I, three administrative positions have been outsourced since 2016. Park and Rec Recreation Program was outsourced completely to the YMCA in 2015. Reduction in staffing from 118 to six as a result of the outsourcing in Public Works. The golf course has been outsourced to a, a Spirit Golf, which is a management company, which eliminated roughly, I think, twenty-some jobs over there. That, and, and by the way, we've turned a corner on the golf course. It's doing, it's doing quite well under Spirit's management. And Memorial Affairs, they took the catering as well, but Spirit Golf is now doing the catering as of January 2018. Administration, one position was eliminated in 2014, 2015, was a, was a confidential administration, administrative assistant. So my point being is that we've done everything we possibly can to cut costs here. We fully funded the pension in 17, correct?
Correct.
At market value.
Yep.
We're trying, I am anyway. I want to fully fund our pension here again this year, and I want to put the money into the funds that need to be put in there. So I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to the board for discussion. I think you all know where I stand. But I think there's a consensus here that the seven and a half mills is excessive, that I don't think anybody, any of us are agreeable to that tonight. I mean, I don't think we even need to take action on it if there's, on that...
No, you can take action on whatever budget you want.
On whatever, okay. All right, so before, and I ask for any action, I'd be glad to open it up for discussion.
I mean, I would just like to say that, I mean, you're right. There's been a concerted effort to control costs over the course of the years. I mean, I remember seeing it, when, again, when I was sitting out there yelling and screaming about the sale of the school properties and things of that nature. And, and I, and I know, I mean, we, there was budgetary issues, because I remember it being talked about, that we didn't have the money to cut the grass back then. So what I see as an issue is that we keep shrinking our services, we keep making cuts, and it hasn't solved the issue. So what I would like to talk about is really going back to the Budget Board, which I think we've got five fantastic members that are on there. I think that what we, what we need to do is we need to give them financial consultants for them to do the job that they really need to do to come up with. And, and I, I think I was clear about this before, about what I really want is a long-term plan, that if we're gonna be taking any action, that it's part of a larger process, that we can say, especially with the help of financial consultants and professionals, that in five years, we're, we're gonna be out of this mess, and we're not gonna continue to cut or continue to raise taxes. Maybe 10 years, maybe, you know, if everything goes great, we can look out at an economic revitalization over, over 20 years. In fact, that's kind of what I was referring to before. I mean, I, I came up with the term W E R P, Warmminster's Economic Revitalization Plan. That's what I want. I want something that, when the Budget Board says, "Look, you need to do this, this is part of a larger scope plan that we can all look at, township residents can all look at, and, and ultimately, and I think, I think everybody on this board wants to permanently resolve that issue and fix it." I don't think anybody disagrees with that aspect of it. But that's, that's my view.
I agree with Mr. Monroe. Since Greg has informed us of, of the budget issues that we have and the deficit that, that we're, that are gonna be facing, I, I don't want to make a decision, and in five years, maybe some of us aren't here, and we're right back where we started. I want a long-term solution, so we can resolve the financial crisis, crisis for future generations in the township. I think we put our heads together, we can find a, a long-term solution. I, I do believe that the Budget Committee, you know, they, they had a bit of a handicap when they first were formed, because they were not given the financial consultation, consultants, and they were given a limited time to work within the confines of the, of the budget that was coming up. I think if we do that, empower them, because it is a good, like Brian said, it's a good group of, of folks that have volunteered their time to find solutions for us. I think that might be a good solution.
Well, short-term, can we take their recommendations for this year? One of them, we already have. We've moved stormwater, we officially, we effectively did that tonight. Their second recommendation is to raise the millage rate. Can you please, your chairman, please?
Okay, good evening again. Ken Hayes, A50 Lingo Drive. So those recommendations were based on the preliminary budget that was presented to us. It did not include, at that time, the trash hauling that was, that wasn't even in the equation, so...
Nor for us either. That's why we kinda...
Right, so, so, you know, I just, you know, we're, that millage increase was based on...
That's why I didn't put a number on it, I made that statement.
Yes, yes. So, you know, I don't want, I don't want it to be perceived that we're, we're, you know, we're recommending, oh, yeah, just raise, raise the millage rate and...
And that's why I asked the manager to prepare an alternate budget.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, you know, to, to our, to our credit, to everyone that was on the, on the committee, we did, I mean, we were formed the last week in, in May, and we, we crunched through that thing in a couple of months, which there, there was a lot to digest, and a lot of things going on.
This is a good report.
And, and the trash hauling wasn't there, and there were a few other things. We didn't have any final numbers, so...
And nor did we.
Right, right. So, so, you know, that's, that's all I wanted to say, so...
But is the budget, would the Budget Committee still recommend the millage increase this year? I'm not putting a number on it, just asking.
I mean, we, we'd have to discuss that. I, I, there's a handful of us here, but, you know, we'd have to look at the budget again, to be honest with you. And, you know, and, and it would help to have a little bit of professional people that are in this, that understand Act 47, which is gonna be a train wreck for this township. You know that?
I've been talking about it for two years.
Right.
Tough years.
Right, so, so...
I don't want to give you a little help. I want to give you a lot of help.
Well, and that would, and that would really, really work to the township's advantage, to the, to the residents and everyone else, that we have some tools to work with, people that, that have experience in this type of situation.
And I, and I also want to make clear, too, I mean, we're still gonna be tight on time. I mean, that's obvious. I mean, we're, we're talking about having to knuckle down both this board and the Budget Board, and, you know, I don't know if we're gonna have to meet twice a month. I mean, I mean, this is something that, until it's resolved, that we're gonna all have to bear down and, and cross every t and dot every i.
Yeah, and we, and if I may, Mike and, and Bob are here. I mean, we, we, we volunteered our time. We were, we were willing to meet twice a month, and sometimes we did. And if I may speak, I, I don't see a problem with that, too. You know, we want to find a solution as well. But, but having a little extra tools in the toolbox for, I mean, I'm not, I'm not an expert on, on municipal finances, and, and some of the ins and outs of how to go about maneuvering through the system, so to speak, you know, to avoid Act 47. We don't, we don't have those tools. We're not that type of, I mean, I'm a businessman and a scientist, but I, I don't work in municipal budgets, so it's much different.
Mr. Schuster does, and he's making recommendations to us.
That's true. That's true.
I mean, but my problem is...
I'm not dis, I'm not discrediting or disregarding his recommendations either, you know. He did a great job in presenting everything to us. I, I think Greg and his staff did a great job. But, you know, I'm saying, if you're going to ask us, and we're willing to, to donate our time again, to volunteer our time for the benefit of the township, but along with Mr. Schuster, perhaps some other, some other tools in the toolbox. I mean, would you guys agree or disagree with that? So...
Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
Thanks, Ken. Sure, Neil, please, come on.
Anita Cook, 911 Auto Lane. For the Budget Committee, thank you for volunteering your time and your efforts to help all the citizens and to help the supervisors make the, hopefully, the right decision. My question is, because I'm not allowed to, because of my job, be on any kind of financial committee. I'm not allowed to. But when they, when you guys meet, isn't our finance director there? I mean, isn't he like...
He was there for most of the meetings, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not present.
But, but isn't he the, an expert in municipal budgets? I, I don't know. I don't know what is...
I think John is incredibly competent. I would call him an expert, you know. I have experience. There's other people here, you know.
So you're at the meetings as well?
Yes, I attend the meetings.
So if we already have a financial expert there that we're paying, okay, two, I don't, I'm not, how much more do you need?
We had an opportunity last year to go in with the state and recoup 50% of what it would cost to bring in the financial experts. I mean, I, I want to use every tool in the tool belt, and I think that more eyes and, you know, and part, and part of the issue, too, is that, I mean, anybody who's ever dealt with a problem, and when you're, you know, when you're part of a township or you're part of an organization that's got an issue internally, sometimes you can't see the forest for the trees. So when you bring someone else in, financial consultants, consultants, I think that could be beneficial. And I, so John could be there, the township manager could be there.
They're getting paid for already? That's my point.
Well, I think they're doing a lot. I mean, you'd have to ask them about their job.
But how much, how much more is this gonna cost, too? I mean, if we have two experts there...
Well, that can be discussed by the board. I mean, I, I think it's...
And then where do you get these people from? Another township? Like, or is this the state? You know what I mean? Like, it's not like a job you see advertised every day. And then what would make those people qualified? Like, you know, it's like in a hall of mirrors, where does it end? If we already have two experts there, and I, I understand, we're, we have an impasse now, we have an issue now, but giving them more help is a great idea, but one, where's it coming from? Two, who's gonna pay for it? And three, why do we need it if we're already paying two experts now? That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Sure, please. Yeah, please.
I'm replying to her question. Patty Cross, 2091 Lane. We do have two experts now. You're, you're an expert, but...
I'm flattered, by the way. I don't know, but I...
Well, no, I, I mean, I don't know you, so I'm just saying that's what they're calling you, so congratulations.
Professional, so that's a professional.
Yeah, but even with that, we're still facing bankruptcy, and you've been on, how long have you been here? So that's why...
About two and a half years.
Yeah, so maybe someone else can step in who, like, that's what, like, if, like, I worked at Abington Hospital for a very long time, and when they needed financial help, they brought a company in. Now they have experts. Like, they bring somebody in to look at everything and make suggestions, difficult situations that somebody might not point out, that someone might say. They might say, "We are gonna limit jobs. We're gonna get rid of this, this, and this." Like, they might, they will bring a, a different view to it. That's, that's what bigger companies do.
But Patty, my question would be, would this board be willing to accept their recommendations? I mean, I don't know. We're gonna find out shortly if this board's willing to accept their recommendation.
Well, I should hope not. Not that, not that huge increase, I should hope not.
I'm saying if we bring outside people in and we pay them...
That would be fantastic, and have fresh eyes.
Would this board be willing to accept their recommendations?
It would be a start to fix a problem that...
That is a great question.
My, my chalky, but I agree with you. In terms of having independent eyes, because it's, it's... Sometimes you can't see the forest for the trees. I'm just...
I agree.
I'm just saying. Well, my, my thoughts, and I, I didn't know if anybody in the public else wanted to talk, I didn't want to jump the line, is that when, you know, the seven mill's not tenable, can't, we can't do that. We have to close the pension deficit. If we close the pension hole and fully fund the pensions, the, the MMO disappears.
Stabilizes.
Stabil...
Well, to fully fund the pension.
Well, yeah, yeah. I apologize, I used the wrong term. It would, it would not, it would, would it remain at like $2.7 million a year, with what we're currently paying, correct?
Uh, no, there's a chance it could go, probably a high chance it would go down, because right now, we're paying off unfunded liabilities. You pay off the unfunded liability, the MMO could potentially go down, but that's also tied into future contract negotiations and other factors that you can't, you can't, yeah.
So the, my point of bringing this up, in order to, to solve it permanently, we have to put everything on the table, everything we own. Every asset we own, we have to evaluate, and we have to make hard decisions. Otherwise, a tax increase, whether it's over a couple of years or a, a large one, which I agree we should, we should avoid, is, is going to have to occur. So it would, that, that's my, how we use that, whether it's the Budget Board or, or whatever, we're gonna have to look at the assets. Is it, I mean, people have suggested walking away from Shandau Woods. Is that a viable option? Does that really save us money? Does it? I don't know. I mean, it costs us a $100,000 deposit, but could we be liable for things down the road? I don't have these answers yet. My point being is, everything has to, there can't be any sacred cows, so to speak, anymore. If we, if we don't, if we don't close the budgets and taxes, then we all have to accept that fact that we're gonna have to do something. Like, a year ago, when we were at, 12 months ago, when we were at, at the Tenon High School, and it was a, a vote against valuing the water authority at that time. You know, what if we come back and, and whether it be an independent expert says, "We should sell the golf course," or "We should do this," or "We should get rid of that." We have, if, if we go down that path, we have to be, all of us have to be ready to say, "Yes, we're gonna accept the recommendations," like you were alluding to. I mean, that, for me, it's, 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 that's what it comes down to, but it's also, that's the permanent solution. That's the solution, is because if we raise taxes and don't fix the pension hole, in a couple of years, we're gonna have no more room left in the taxes to increase, and we're gonna have to sell something. So if we can sell something and not put the burden back onto the, the taxpayers right now, that would be my preferred, that's just my thoughts.
But if we don't raise taxes, we're not gonna fully fund our pension, and that MMO isn't gonna get smaller, it's gonna get bigger, and quickly, correct?
It's possible to predict what the MMO is going to do, but not fully funding it is going to have a negative impact on it, yes.
I, I mean, it was said that a tax increase isn't a permanent fix, and yeah, I can see that, but evaluating everything and finding that permanent fix, as Jason said, that's the answer.
It has to be done quickly. It can't be three years.
I, I think the one thing, and you touched on it, Jason, we talk about taxing our, our way out of it. And I think we all know, every person on this board is taxing our way out of this is not possible under the second-class township code. You cannot do it. Why can't you do it? Well, everyone says, okay, well, you hear about tax raises every year over on the school board side, they do 3%, 3%, 3%. Well, they're capped on an annual basis. Every year, they can only raise it so much, but every year, they can raise taxes. This board can raise taxes, but just under, we have eight mills more that we can go up. So we, the, the original recommendation was about seven and a half mills. Once we got to that eight mills with court approval, the only way that we can ever raise taxes again, ever, is with a referendum by every person in this room, which, good luck, or a change of system of government, which would also be for the purposes of raising taxes, to give you more millage room to be able to raise taxes. So I don't think either of those two would ever happen. So, I, I mean, the stock market went down another 400 today. It's been, God knows how many thousands of points it's, it's gone down just in the last couple of weeks or months. We don't know what it's gonna do in the future. We raised taxes seven and a half mills, we're basically capped out, and then the MMO takes a major shock to the system again by a declining stock market return. Then what do we do? Then what do we do? So my fear is that we, we, we got eight, about eight mills, give or take, maybe a little bit less than that, and we use part of that, and that's like a lifeline to me, and I don't want to be, I don't want to be on a, a wire without a net. I just don't want to, and I think, I think it's dangerous to do. And I, I liked what Dan and Jason just said, and I, I think that we can move forward, give you guys, the Budget Board, the financial consultants that you need. We all have to acknowledge that. We don't have any time to do anything. I mean, this is something that we gotta expedite, and we really have to sharpen our, our pencils and get to work.
I think by taking this action, I do agree with my fellow board members that, and been saying it now for... and I've been saying it now for quite a while, we need a permanent solution because I don't want this to come back to bite the township and our residents down the road. In five years, so we raised, raised the maximum amount of, of our, of our increase that we could do, which none of us really want to do because we feel it would be too much of a burden on, on our residents. But if we find a permanent solution, in five years, we're not going to have to come back to this. We will have, we will be solvent. We will have a permanent solution for future generations to come. So if we all put our heads together, I'm sure, give the tools to the Budget Committee so they can do their job, and like Brian said, we have to do this quickly because we don't want this to, this to go into Act forty-seven, so...
And I think that permanent solution would be in terms of evaluating everything.
Everything.
And seeing where we're at.
Right. Everything but the kitchen sink. I said that a lot of times.
Again, I'm going to speak for the rest of the committee. That tax increase, again, that was based on the proposed budget. None of us wanted to cap, reach the ceiling. And I'm speaking for the rest of the committee. We saw some sort of increase as a short-term solution to do exactly what I'm hearing everybody say now. Now, back in January, we didn't hear that, okay? Things were taken right off the table. Now, in those recommendations...
Correct.
In those recommendations, actually, suggestions not recommended, or options not recommended, I'm sorry.
Evaluations were taken off the table in January at, at the high school. You're correct.
Well...
Valuation for water authority, we're talking evaluation for everything.
And, and that's part of those options not, not recommended, was to value, I mean, we put everything, that memo has everything that you, that you...
And this is available to the public, by the way, if anyone wants a copy of this.
In that memo, I believe it says, "Value all the assets." Somewhere in there, I, I know we talked about that.
Just, I mean, the way I, the way I look at it, whatever words we want to use, recommended or options, the way I looked at the, the memo that you guys had created, and it was very well done, was that it was essentially, it was a, it was a menu of potential options that we could use.
That's correct.
Right, so, so just so I'm clear, what I've been looking for from the beginning, and what, what I would want to task you guys with is, I mean, we can call it whatever we want. I, I use the Warminster Economic Revitalization, but it's a little wordy, but we could work on that. I want a, I want a, a plan. And I think that we can do that, and I think when we do that, I think the, I think this entire board would be able to look at a step and be able to say, okay, this is, this is part of a series of steps. We know what this step is going to do, what the next step is going to be, and where it's going to eventually take.
And that's what we wanted to provide, you know, in the first, the first two or three months. So June, July, and into August, we were still going through all the financials and, and reviewing and getting up to speed with everything. So if, if you continue on with the Budget Committee, this, this next go, we don't have to get up to speed. We're already there. So it'll be much easier for us as far as not having to go through all the financials and understand the situation, or, you know, the, where, where the township stands currently, you know, up to now. So, I mean, that's, what I'm saying is that we had, there was a lot of things there. And as far as, as consultants go, everybody on the planet, every large corporation on the planet, regardless of their financial health, has consultants that help them along. And it's, it's, it's a value-added. You know, I, I understand the cost, and I understand the situation we're in. And, and, you know, we'll, we'll accept what, what the role we get, the hand that we're dealt, but it, it wouldn't hurt, let's put it that way, because they have the expertise. I'm not saying Greg and John are not experts. They're, they're professionals. But there's, but there's, there's banks of accountants and, and attorneys and, and corporate accountants at each financial institution, and they still have consultants to help them along because there is an extra set of eyes. And, and, you know, and that would, that would help us as well to formulate a long-term plan, which is what you guys want us to do.
So, well, before we move on to consultants and all that stuff, we have to adopt the budget tonight. Correct?
That is correct. We need a budget, yes.
So we need to take this type of action before we talk about taking that type of action.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
Am I wrong?
You could do it either way, but I mean, we'd need a budget, one way or the other.
So I, I think we need to drill down on budget here. I mean, that's what the agenda item is. The options have been laid out in front of us. I mean, we can discuss the next step after action's taken on a, on a, on a budget. So I think the consensus is that, that Option A is off the table. So I'm not even going to entertain a motion for Option A. But I, I am going to, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt Option B budget, and I'm going to ask Mr. Schuster to review that one more time.
I believe you're referring to the alternative that has a cap of five mils on the total increase. That's the one that has a general fund mill rate increase from eleven point oh nine to fifteen point eight six and a fire tax mill rate increase from one point two five to one point four eight. This would result in approximately $785,000 deficit, which would have to be taken out of fund balance.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McPhillips, second. Is there any further discussion that we understand what this, this option is? And to me, this option is keeping the lights on while we have these people come do this. So there's no other discussion. I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion fails. Four to one. Next up is, is Option C. Mr. Schuster, would you review Option C?
I believe you're referring to the alternative that has no tax increase, in which case all mill rates would remain the same. The deficit would be two, without any further action, would be two points, approximately $2.3 million. That would result in discussions about significant reductions in expenditures. We'd have to almost certainly put the police pension on the smoothing method. There is a police vacancy that we anticipate in February that would not go filled. And of course, the support to the fire companies would decrease. If that $2.3 million deficit came to fruition, you would basically expend all of your fund balance without, if you didn't take any remedial action.
Okay, is there a motion? So, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McPhillips? I'm going to ask for a roll call on this because this is a very important vote here. I mean, people need to realize this is, isn't Plan B, it's Plan C, but to me, it's Plan B, it's Plan Bankruptcy. And we'll have, yeah, we'll have some, you know what, if there's any public comment, I'll ask for it too before we take this vote. But we, we are going to take action on the other things we discussed. But I, I can't say anymore about it. I think this is a tremendous mistake that we're putting this township in peril by, by not taking any action at all tonight on, on raising revenue. I do, that's just my opinion. So if there's no other comment, I'm going to take a roll call vote. Ms. Fresca, tour?
Nay.
Mr. Monroe?
I think, I disagree with you. I do think this is the step in the right direction. I did say that I would not vote for a budget that didn't have a long-term plan. But I think that we, as a board, are going to be able to do the right thing moving forward. And concerning the police pension and whatnot, after everything is said and done, I think that we're going to be, I think this board and the Budget Board is going to do the right thing. But on this budget, I will be a nay.
Okay. Well, wait a minute. We're taking action on budget, Item C.
So you're voting against...
You're voting against Item C.
Correct, because that, that's peril.
So you don't want to adopt the budget at all?
That budget does fail.
We have to adopt a budget.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You have to adopt a budget. You're, as a township supervisor, required to adopt a budget. And Item C was adopting a budget with no, no mill increase.
All right, so what I, what I will, what I will do then, on that note, I will vote aye.
Okay.
But with, with...
A caveat.
The caveat is that we will give them, which I don't know if we can do that.
What?
But that's, that's what I would want, is I want to, I will vote aye on it, but as long as we give them...
I know we had an option to do that.
Yeah, that's, I know.
Can we do that?
I, I don't know which...
Can we do that?
No, there's a motion, there's a motion and a second on the floor to adopt Option C.
Excuse me, you, you, you can't, your vote for the budget can't be conditional. You're required to pass a budget. So the, the three, the, the three matters that you had to consider were either the seven mil increase, the five mil increase, or the zero mil increase. The, the...
We can't put any attachments on it, is what you're saying.
Right, you can't, you can't come in and say, but my vote only counts in the event that something else happens.
Okay.
And there's a motion and a second.
I'm fine with that. So I'm an aye.
Okay, Ms. Fresca, tour, you're an aye.
I'm an aye, yes.
Monroe, you're an aye.
An aye.
Mr. McPhillips?
Aye.
Mr. Crowley?
Aye.
And the chair votes no, and I want that on record. Chris, make sure you put that in the intel tomorrow morning, too. Yeah, that's even better. More people will see it. Thank you, because I feel like I'm stepping back onto the SS Warminster here. I do. Disgusted. But anyway, let's move on. We have to, with, with an accordance with that, we have to adopt resolution, right?
Yes, so we have the...
All right, now, I, I just want the board to know that in light of what you just did, there will be no tax increase that will require the filing of a petition in the court.
That's correct.
So that being the case, my office, I, I'm sure, is, is authorized to withdraw that petition and cancel that hearing.
Do we need a vote for that, or is that...
No, you don't need a vote for that because, because we can't, we can't ask for what you don't vote for.
Right, so the consensus is to withdraw it, okay. So next up is, you have to, we have to prepare.
So there's a resolution. Do you have the copies of the alternate resolution?
The alternate resolution, Item C. Yeah, so I'm, I'm going to need that. Okay, so which one am I reading here, Greg?
So I can read it off.
Yeah, go ahead, if you want to craft the motion. Thank you.
So this would be approving Resolution 2018 dash forty-eight. This would be setting the mill rates as follows. General fund, eleven point zero nine. Ambulance fund, point one three. Fire fund, one point two five. Library fund, one point eight five. Park and Rec Fund, two. Debt Service Fund, point seven five, for a total millage of seventeen point oh seven. All of those are unchanged from 2018 going into 2019. Additionally, it would set trash fees at $440 per year, with a senior discount, $55 off that per year, for a total of $385 per year. I'll note that that's slightly less than what I presented previously. We discovered a, a minor formula error, which worked in our favor, so it decreased slightly the trash fees. That would be the resolution I would ask for your approval for tonight.
Is there a motion? I'm not going to make it. I voted no. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Crowley's motion, second by Mr. Monroe. Is any discussion on the motion? Any from the public? Seeing the question, all in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes a reluctant aye, but I have to, I have to agree with the trash hauling, so I'm a reluctant aye. Item B is approved transfer of all funds from operating reserve fund into police pension fund and closure of operation reserve fund bank accounts. Want to give a brief description of that?
Yes, this is the closure and moving all the funds from the operating reserve fund, approximately $540,000,000 into the police pension fund. This is not something that I can recommend doing at this point with the action that you just took with the, the budget.
Okay, so, okay. So is, is there a motion?
You don't have to do any motion.
We don't have to, we don't have to vote it down?
You don't have to vote it down, but unless you want to...
Then we don't take any action at all?
You want to override me, you certainly can.
Okay, well, we won't take any action at all on that one. We'll just basically cross that from the agenda, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right. All right, we can move on to, well, do we want to have further discussion on this? Because there's talk about consultants and things like that, is now the appropriate time to have that discussion, being that we're still on...
Can do whatever we'd like.
And we're still on budget here, so probably we should have that discussion now.
I think so.
Okay, okay. So anyone that wants to open up the floor for discussion, go ahead.
Is the option that was available a year ago, is that still on the table with respect to the state and, and sharing resources?
So what I recommended, I think it was May, April, something like that, was entry into the DCD Early Intervention Program. There are timelines for that program. They do pay fifty percent of the costs of, of a consultant. I don't know what the timeline is for that. I, I just don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
So you can get back to us on that, right?
Of course I can, yes.
Okay, what the timeline is.
So maybe there's not any action to take on this tonight, then, if we're going to have to get additional information? I mean, we, I guess we can take action to instruct you to, to put together some type of...
I, I need to know what the board wants.
Chair, can we, can we at least get started as far as, it seems like, and I, I want to make sure that all of my fellow board members, that we agree that the Budget Committee should be given the tools to get, to do the job, to give us the recommendation, and to do it quickly so we, so we can get our township solvent again. Are we all on board with, with...
Three board members are agreeable to that, so am I.
Evaluating everything we've got and giving them the tools that they need to come up with a proposal.
Well, they're two separate things.
They're two separate things.
They're two separate things.
Right, this is going to be...
Take, yeah, there's two, requires two votes.
Correct.
Yeah, this isn't going to be an easy process.
No.
And, and there's going to be hiccups. So, I mean, we just saw some confusion tonight. There's going to be confusion with this. But we, but we all got to do it at a quick pace. I mean, my, I do think that you're right, I think with respect to the financial consultants. I mean, I, I would be in favor of giving them financial consultants. I'm assuming you are. Is, is everybody on this board?
Well, in my opinion, I already have two. But if, if the majority of the board wants to give them financial consultants, the majority of the board rules, of course.
Jason, Dan?
Are we, are we doing that as part of the, if the DC, whatever, DCD? Thank you. Early Intervention Program is available to us. You want to do it as part of that, or you want to just do a blanket where we're just saying, "Yeah, we're going to give them financial consultants"? Because we're going to have to, we're going to have to bid, or how does that work?
Well, as a professional service, I don't believe you have to bid. However, I believe if I remember correctly, if you do it through DCD, you do have to go through either an RFP or an RFQ process to qualify for the grant. But if you were to do it on your own, and correct me if I'm wrong, as a professional service, you wouldn't have to bid that out.
You are correct.
How long does that process take, Greg?
If you don't want to bid it out, it can be very quickly if you have someone in mind. I can tell you, I have, I have no recommendation off the top of my head.
Just, I mean, so we've got pension advisors. We've got PFM, all right, just to use them as an example. I mean, how difficult would it be to go to them and get costs, saying, "This is what we want to do." Give us, you know, give us an estimate on what, I mean, because ultimately, it is going to come down to what's...
Well, that, that would be fairly easy, however, I would actually recommend not using PFM. And that's got nothing to do with the quality of service they're getting, but they have been involved in our pension. They're also involved with the issuance of debts. They've been involved in our finances, and if you're looking for an independent view, it would probably be best to select someone other than PFM, which, again, I'm not saying anything about their quality. I just, I think if you...
Fresh eyes, right, Greg?
Well, independence.
You can't order your own work, is really what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, we've taken bids in the, in the past. We know that some of the, the companies that are out there, so I'm just, was using them as an example, since we're familiar, familiar with them.
Now, now, DCD, I believe, does have a list of firms that are qualified to provide this service through the Early Intervention Program. Could we put out a quick RFP? Absolutely, we, we could.
Okay.
So do, do we want to instruct a manager to put an RFP out? Is that the, is that the step that we're looking for here?
Well, that's something you could do, but what I need is, is what are you looking for the financial, you know, consultant to deliver to you?
A financial plan in coordination with the Budget Committee to give them, I guess, consultation, whatever word that you want to use, at their budget meetings, so they're going to have to be at those budget meetings. And, and, I mean, from there, it's going to be between them and the Budget Board.
You're looking for something akin to what the comprehensive plan had.
Right.
Right.
That's a good, that's a very good example.
Good analogy.
Okay, so the, the end deliverable document, is it coming from the Budget Committee with support from the consultant, or are you looking for the consultant to deliver it?
Consultant.
I guess the consultant.[1759.02]
Consultant.
Yeah.
I, I would assume that would be, I don't think, as talented as the Budget Committee is, they don't have the, the resources or the time to prepare a document of that level.
Right.
I would, I would, I would assume that a consultant, sort of like how Pooch and James created the.
And they can incorporate it in their report, yeah. Good, good idea, Jason, I like that.
Okay, I will draft an RFP accordingly, I will send it out to the board for review and get it on a future agenda for your approval.
So there's no action required tonight, then, other than instruct you to do that?
Yes, instruct me to do that, yes.
So we need to take an action on that?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
A motion.
Ms. Monroe, second, Ms. Frescatore, any further discussion? Any from the public? Sure, John, come on up, buddy.
John Preovis, six, seven, Fort Joseph Avenue. It's been a long time, that, that, you know, two thousand and eleven. The bottom line is, he, I think you made a mistake, you guys should have raised the taxes just a little bit and funded the pension fund, maybe if it was short, we could get it, or if it got readjusted after we paid back, basically, would, would be the penalties or whatever, because we're, we're behind on it. You, you should have done it that way. You could have went back in with your, with your committee to find the gap in the back end of that, and maybe we could have come to a, a more positive financial situation after that fact, and maybe we would have been solvent and we wouldn't be under the stress of, of that. I understand there's people that aren't making a lot of money in the township, I own three properties in Warminster. Who, who wouldn't want the taxes to go up? But it's inevitable, it's, it's something that has to happen. The school district does it, and they're on a, they're on a freight train, and they keep taking and taking and taking, and that's why you guys didn't do it over the period of a, a certain amount of time. Other, uh, uh, other reasons were probably political and didn't want to impose it so they could get votes to go somewhere else, things like that. But the mistake today has been made with the township. I do believe you should have raised it to address the immediate problem and then put a board together to fix the back end of it, to get this township into a positive cash flow financially. Yes, we're putting buildings up, we're getting tax dollars from there, that could fill some of the gap. We could do, do something with some, you know, one of the parks or something like that, sell, put some more houses in, get some more tax dollars there.
No, John, easy, easy.
You know what I mean? I understand, but.
We'll get killed on Facebook tomorrow, you know.
Yeah, I know, but the bottom line is, I think that we, we, we should have raised them a little bit.
Board talks about selling parkland, that's what'll be up tomorrow.
Well, then, I hear you, but you know, we should have, we should have, we should have done something to kill the immediate problem.
Oh, I.
That's my opinion.
I agree.
I, you know, I don't think doing nothing and then setting up a board to try to find the answer, I think you're wasting another year.
No, we can't, we can't, we can't waste another year.
Well.
I, I, everyone's got an opinion.
I agree with you, I agree with you, yeah, we should, we should get, get some outside set of eyes, I agree with that a hundred percent. Always another opinion sometimes does help. It's like an investment in your child, you send them to college, you pay for it, so if we hire this guy, it's an investment in the township. He might find a hundred and fifty thousand or a couple hundred thousand dollars that is hidden somewhere that we could actually work with. But I don't know how much you could get out of it, but I think that we should have done a little more there.
There, there's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? See, now I call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes no. Next up is new business, then, correct?
Do we have to vote on value, on hiring somebody to value our assets?
No, we're, we're gonna have a professional come in, correct, Greg?
Does he do both? That was my question, sorry.
So, okay, let's, what do you, what assets are you referring to? Because everything, the township owns tons and tons of assets, so.
Well, not, not obviously computers and microphones and.
Yeah, I, I, but I want to.
Real estate.
Right.
So. Real estate, which really you're referring to parks, I'm assuming.
Everything, put a price on everything. What is everything worth? Because the, the options has to be laid out. If we do not want to increase taxes, whether it be next year or over a course of years or a large one, we're not going, we're not going to get the money for the pension through taxes alone. So it has to come from some other thing. So whether it comes from the sale of real estate, sale of authority, sale of anything that we own, we're gonna have to come up with some sort of golf course.
I'm just trying to get the scope of, of.
No, I, I, I don't mean to come off as coarse.
So, so, so there's parks, you want to evaluate the golf course as well?
Golf course.
Okay.
We have to have, if we evaluate all of that, and then we can make an informed decision. If we don't have all those numbers in front of us, then we can't make a decision if we don't have all the information.
Okay, and.
The Budget Board can make that.
The Budget Board, right.
The, and also the Administrative Authority, the water and sewer system, is that correct?
Yep.
So are we, are we proposing taking action here to evaluate all them right now?
So, the.
We'll try and find out.
These are, first of all, are there any other categories that I missed? I have parks, I have the golf course, and I have the water and sewer system. Is there anything else?
Well, I say parks, uh, real estate includes the land that this sits on, anything we own, the Stub Road property.
Shenandoah Woods.
Shenandoah Woods.
We don't own that.
We don't own Shenandoah Woods.
We can't, we can't really get an evaluation.
But I mean, evaluate our participation.
We can evaluate, right?
That could be part of the evaluation process, sorry, yes.
Okay, so you, you also want to evaluate the administration building? The public works, L and I buil- building?
Yeah, everything.
All right, anything else? Okay, so some of the.
Anything, excuse me, Greg, if you're, if we're missing anything that, that has a nice price tag, that might be able to, to sol- to solve some of the issues that we have, we should probably get, get that evaluated. Are we missing anything that you can see?
There's only one thing on this list, and that's the water and sewer system. Everything else I'm happy to, to evaluate, but that's the only thing I'm here with significant value that would get you out of this situation. So, looking at this list, there's different categories here. The, the ones that involve land, such as parks, administrative building, and police station, public works, and L and I.
Can I stop you? Can we evaluate Warminster Community Park, Aaron? I don't think we can sell that, can we? To take that off the list.
Well, that, that's one of the things we'd have to go through in the event.
But that's why doing this on the fly like this is a complete insanity.
Can we, can we, so can you do some of the research? I mean, I would like it to be talked about by the Budget Board. Have you guys meet first thing in January, put your heads together, and if you make this recommendation, this way it'll give you a little bit of time to be able to put some of these thoughts together and then make the recommendation.
Please, Ken, please.
That's a good idea.
So, um, it, it sounds like it's a fire sale now, so.
It's an evaluation.
Well, the years end, it will be a fire sale, because we just adopted a budget that had us on a collision course with bankruptcy.
Let me kind of be clear with what you're charging us with, please. You want, you want us to, our first scheduled meeting is January fifteenth. You want us to meet earlier and, and do what? What, what can we do in the first meeting? We want to recommend valuing all our assets, all of our assets? And then, and you know, and say, here it is, figure it out, is that, is that what you want, or?
Well, and I think at that point, we would know a little bit more about the potential professionals that will be able to provide you.
Well, would it be wiser to have us sit down with professionals and with Mr. Schuster and John? And, and kind of hash out some options first? Or do we just say, let's get rid of it all? I mean, I, I, you know.
Well, I think.
We'll, we'll do exactly what, what you ask us to do.
I think what the, the board is talking about is not, they're not talking about selling anything, they're talking about collecting data.
To, to value all our assets.
To value the assets, that's correct.
Okay, so we're, you want us to, can we at least sit down with, with, and figure out exactly what is worth valuing?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, like I said, the Budget Committee will do exactly what we're charged with. We'll, 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 we'll try to accommodate you, but what I'm hearing up here is a little irrational or a rash, rash decision.
And by mid-year, it's gonna be panic.
And, and that's what I want to avoid, because, you know, look, we, we want to, we want to, like I said before, we're volunteering our time. This is a serious matter, and I brought this up before, and I said to everyone, everyone, I said, you guys have some tough decisions to make, all right? Now, if you want to put that on us, we'll take it. But, you know, you have to give us some, some parameters, we have to have some rails here.
I'm not putting anything on you, this is the board's supervisor.
Well, I get that, I get that, I know, I understand, but, but you know, this is.
You've lost your cool for no reason, Ken. But the board keeps, seems to keep, seems to keep punting it to you.
Relax.
I'm not, I'm just saying. The board keeps, seems, seems to keep punting it to you. This is the board's responsibility to make these decisions.
Well, that's okay, that's okay.
Absolutely, you're a hundred percent right.
Yeah, you know, and, and again, what exactly is it, just, just tell me what exactly it is you want me to do in, in January. That's all I'm asking. Give, give me some direction, and we will actually, and we'll follow your direction.
The ma- the manager will let you know, Ken.
Okay.
Okay, okay?
Sure.
Any other questions?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay, great, thank you.
We don't need to take any action.
I, I just need some, so basically you want the Budget Committee to decide what should be valued and what shouldn't be valued? Is that what you're asking?
I mean, I, I think it should come from the Budget Board. I mean, if, if, we're talking about evaluating, I mean, I, I, on the surface, I agree. I mean, I, I think that, I mean, I said this before, back in whenever that meeting was at the high school. I think collecting of information so that people can make the best decision possible was a prudent method. But I also want to create a system here that the board, the Budget Board's gonna be able to come up with recommendations that this board's gonna be able to.
Can I ask you a question? Does the board really want to waste the time, money, and energy evaluating our parks? Evaluating our parks, I mean, that means we're actually considering selling parks. I mean, we have board members here that have beat the drum for open space in parks for as long as I've been here. Why would we do that? Why do you even put that on the table? One, parks, we can't even sell, we don't own it, the Department of Interior does.
Sure.
Why would we evaluate our parks? I mean, why is that even up for discussion?
I said real estate, it devolved into parks. I would, I would say real estate, if you want to exclude parks, we can exclude parks. Real estate, the golf course, and authority, I'd like to know those numbers.
So if we're gonna sell this building, do we meet in a trailer out in, in the parking lot or something, or something? Why would we evaluate this property? Because we need, we need an administrative building.
There's other ways of doing things, guys, we've been doing it the same way for twenty-five years. We've, we're saying, oh, we can't cut this, we can't do that, we're never looking at any way of doing anything different, we want to bring someone from the outside to look at doing something different, if we're wrong, we're wrong. And it, it, taxes go up and, and you sell an asset. But what if there's another way? Why, that's, that's what I'm saying, like, what if somebody came to us and said, well, hey, we will build a new police station and.
We have the Facilities Committee, it's been marking that for a year now.
Right, my point, go ahead.
Oh, please, come up.
Bickering, Patty Cross in two oh nine Anne Lane. Can you just put like three bids out tomorrow, find a consulting firm, and say, how do we start this, and, and have them tell you what to do?
Well, when you put out bids, you need a scope of work.
Or can you, do you not have to bid it, can you just call somebody and say, we're looking to do this? What would you, what would your charge be, and how do we start? Like, if you don't, you could just, I don't know, hire somebody like you would do.
We need to identify a scope of the work.
Angie's List, however you do it, find somebody that's gonna do it, ask them how to do it, tell them you need it done immediately.
The, the answer is yes, if you know what you want. I, I need to know what you, it's like you walk into a doctor and say, cure me, but you don't know what.
Yeah, but he's gonna do an x-ray, he's gonna, he's gonna come in and tell you what you need to do. If you call a consulting firm, they're gonna come in and say, this, this, and this need to be done. They're not gonna, they'll tell you what you need to do, that they're, they're an expert.
And, and that's part of the process that you can go through, but again, you need to identify, but they're on a different discussion. They're talking about valuing assets.
Right, well, we don't even, you don't even know if, you let them make the decision on what they're gonna value, what they want to look at, and you tell them what, you, you know what I mean? They'll come in, they'll talk to you, you'll say, we have this, 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 and this, they'll say, no, 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 yes. Get the yellow book, get Yellow Pages if you still have it, Google it, find somebody that's gonna come in, and, and you know, like this week, start calling around. I mean, it, find a company.
But that is irrational, to Kenny's point, it's, it's not how it works, especially in, in municipal government.
Why would a Budget Board be doing it when you're gonna, we're gonna hire an expert anyway? They'll tell you how to do it, that's, that's what they do, they'll come in and they'll say, this is how we do it, this is what I want you to do. They'll make their recommendations, and then they'll be gone. Why we're doing all this part, I'm not understanding, when you hire a company to do that, they tell you how to do it. So trying to value things, they'll sit with you and they'll, they'll tell you how to do it, that's, that's what a company does. You're hiring them to get you out of financial burden. Hire them, have them tell you what to do, and then do it.
But to identify the company that we want to do that for us, we need to first identify what we want them to do, correct?
Well, yeah, that's, that's part of it. Also, you can't forget the timing of this, I mean, yes, you, you can make all kinds of changes during the year, you only get to change the tax rate once a year.
Right.
You know, so there, you know, once you pass January one with this adopted budget, you know, there's really, you have a little more time than I think you, you realize.
But if you can get somebody on, get somebody on board ASAP, I mean, it, have them come in, tell you what to do, I mean, I can Google it for you, find a consulting firm to help a township, I mean, you'll be able to find somebody. Angie's List, do whatever you gotta do, find somebody, get them in, get two bids, and go with it.
I, I, I think, I think the, the financial consultants and the asset evaluation are two separate things.
Sort of, yes.
So if, if we're gonna be talking about asset evaluation, and, I mean, I, I, I would prefer it discussed in the Budget Board, because I think that's what the process should be, I think that the Budget Board should be looking at these, and I think they should be making recommendations, and the vote ultimately comes up to the five people that are up on this board. I think, but having that line of communication, I think is important forward. That's why I think that you guys meet, you guys discuss a possi- possible asset evaluation, make a determination on what should be. Because I, I think it was already in the, the menu of options that was already, that we've been showing already. So I know that you guys have already discussed it to a certain degree. I, I, I think more information's better, but I think I don't want to take that decision from you guys or that recommendation, and then that vote would come up before us. With respect to the financial consultants, I think, I think this, I don't understand what the confusion is with the scope of work. I mean, I think the scope of work is, is you, you bring them in, you, they gotta sit down, whether it's once or it's twice a month, they sit down with these five members, and they, between them and the, the consultants, they come up with a path forward with respect to a, a long-term budget plan. I mean, that's, that's, and then along the way, the Budget Board will make recommendations.
And ultimately, we'll make a decision to, to be solvent for years to come.
I just want to break this chain, I mean, this has been going on for eight years. This has been going on, and it does, it's, there is no one to blame, Republican, it doesn't matter, it's been going on, it's a chain that's been happening with everybody that's been up on this board, and it's time to break it. And I think we're trying to figure out a way to break it. And, you know, I appreciate everyone's recommendations and suggestions, and I think that's the way forward. I, I think, I think, I think insanity is governing crisis to crisis.
I don't disagree with you, but not, not raising revenue this year, why we do this process was a tremendous mistake, and we will pay for this, believe me. Tremendous mistake, because this process isn't gonna happen overnight, it's not. And we are gonna march towards insolvency, why we go through this process. I don't disagree with you about that, I do. Where I disagree was we should have raised revenues this year, we should have. But we've already adopted a budget, so we didn't, we chose not to.
Well, but I also think that we've got limited taxable ability, and we're gonna wash seventy percent of that away? We're gonna wash a hundred percent of that away and back us into a corner when the stock market has taken a dive this year? I, I, I'm terr- that's what terrifies me, what terrifies me is having my back in a quarter and having no way out, that terrifies me.
Judy?
My turn.
Yes, tell us who you are, please.
Hi, Judy Hoover, I'm from the Meadow Woods section of Warminster. I'm your Township Editor, one of them, and I would like to say one thing. I, I've heard some mixed-matched things going on here that are bothering me, so I want to make it clear. You're hiring a consultant, a professional financial consultant, someone that does townships, that's used to working in townships and working with these, this board, I'm assuming, that person can't put the, evaluate the assets.
Correct, that's why we need to break that out.
You need a, you know, real property, commercial, industrial appraiser to do that, that you would go to the State Board of Realtors to get somebody, or maybe the Assessors Association of Pennsylvania, they can give you somebody with an MA to do that, and they would give information to the consultant and the board to help them out with this process. But I just wanted to make sure that you're talking about two different things here.
Yes, there we are, yes, we agree with you.
No sense fighting ever whether there should have been or shouldn't have been a tax increase, you already voted on it, so let's move forward, okay?
Thank you, Judy.
That finger pointing again.
Thank you, Judy. Sure, Jack?
I can only hear maybe half, three quarters of the conversation, but it doesn't matter, because it's the same thing, and it's been going on, you said eight years, it's been going on for twenty years.
Right.
There is only one solution, and, and this, Mark at least, he doesn't deserve the whole straitjacket. He, he, he said that it's a waste of money to go have it devaluated, and, and, for what? You go to the root of the problem, and there's only one root of the problem. You specifically can't start it, the state can't, it's defined benefit pensions, and, and they will tell you, and departing Stu Greenleaf and, and, and his, and his protege or son, you know, I asked him, he, he didn't make it, but he said, oh, nothing can be done. I used to go to school board meetings, just, nothing can be done, it's in the constitution. I used to go to school board meetings, just, nothing can be done, it's in the Constitution. Say, here, nothing can be done, it's in the Constitution, it is, it's in the Constitution. You can bust it. They can make constitutional changes. It has to be done. One township can't do it. The best you can do is what's been doing, kicking the road, kicking the can down the road.
The only thing we were able to do locally, Jack, was in 2013. Therefore, any new non-uniform hires in the township went under defined contribution. Once we got to there, our hands are tied. I hear you.
That's a part of it. But in doing that, that sounds good, but what that does is bust the Ponzi scheme. So you don't have as many people kicking in to the people want defined benefit. So you have to pick it up on the other end.
Yeah, that's...
You have to work together, every municipality, every state. How many states are busted? California, Illinois. They're up a grade. Why? For defined benefit pension. It used to be, public sector workers got pensions, but modest pensions. Maybe based on munis at 4% or some such. Now, when they get old, we have to make 8% just to make the pensions. And, yeah, the good times roll sometimes. But we had 97, we had 08, but we all got a kick in the pants. It took 10 years to recover from that.
That's what killed us.
It's a defined benefit, but you can sell everything, you can... There is nothing you can stop doing and still make up for it. If you could sell every building we have, and you all do business out of a tent and a lot, five years, 10 years from now, market will still take another dump. It's down today, it was down yesterday. It may be down worse tomorrow. And we'll write back... You have to grab the bull by the horns. One municipality can't do it. The best you can do now, bite the bullet, you pay, you know, pass a budget, and that's it. Resign yourself, you're gonna have to do it next year, and then... But you have to start fighting. And you have to start going after your legislators. And just which one, and the last one we had, he said, oh, nothing you can do. He might have been one of the ones to write it into the Constitution, for all I know. That has to be changed. Their equity, defined, those on defined benefit pensions have to be converted. Their equity at a given point in time, converted, rolled over to 401K, and that's it. Define have to be totally eliminated. That's the only salvation. And this ridiculous chatter, and every year we go through it. And it's not just here, it's the state, it's every state.
Definitely.
There's only one root problem. And that's it, and this, starting in 2000, you know, the 401K start, it's no help. It's no solution. Pass your budget, we'll bite the bullet, but for God's sake, get together and start fighting. Not just among yourselves, among every other municipality.
Thank you, Jack. George?
George Lewis, 724 Cheryl, the main famous street in that. Disclaimer, I'm on the authority. How would you like a 30 mil increase? If you sold the authority, that's what Aqua charges. You don't believe me, the newspaper I have to look up, Aqua charges for their sewer, and what Aqua charges for the water. The difference from what we bill and what Aqua bill works out the 30 mil increase, dollar-wise. That's what the township will be paying in Warminster. They're paying $10 million more.
And I think that should absolutely be considered. I absolutely agree with you. But that should be part of the decision process.
Swing deals, if you want to keep your job, you know, you sell Aqua, don't raise the rates for two years. That would bring the value of the property down 20 mil, $20,000, $1 million. So you can do whatever you want, but I would put that, think very hard before you put that on the market. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thank you very much for your vote, Mark.
I just wanted to say, this was a very, very heavy heart, that personally, the decision that I made tonight. But sometimes, when you're backed in a corner, year after year after year, we're facing the same exact problem, and we're not fixing it, we're gonna continue to keep finding the same problem over and over and over again. Just want a permanent solution to keep us solvent for years to come. And maybe it is unorthodox what we're doing right now, but we have to do something different because if we do the things that we've been doing the same, we're gonna end up with the same results. So I just want folks to know that I just want the best interest of the township. And I think it is with a heavy heart, all of us, right now, because we want to do the right thing, and we want to find a permanent solution. So I think we're on the right path, and hopefully, we can come up with something that will permanently solve the problem of the township. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chair.
You guys say yes. So where are we?
I don't know, I lost my agenda.
I don't mean on the agenda, where are we with this discussion?
So what we need to, I think, you call the Budget Board to order first thing in January, and we, I don't know what the process exactly would be, if it's an RFP or whatnot. We'd contact the state, find out what the timeline would be.
We've already given me the instruction to put together the RFP, and I said I was gonna put that together, wash it through you guys, and have it on a future agenda, so that's done.
So I think the discussion's over.
Okay.
Well, there's still an open thing about valuation. All right, so what was the last... Where did you guys?
My recommendation is to have the Budget Board get together and discuss it as soon as they can in January.
So have the Budget Committee get together, discuss it, and make a recommendation?
That's correct.
Okay. You got that, Ken?
You guys got that, Ken?
All right.
Just one last question. I was outside when you guys were looking at the consulting. Greg, could you tell me if, I think this question may have been asked, but I didn't hear the answer. Is there still a shared cost in that with the state?
Yeah, I don't know. That's the DCED Early Intervention Program. I do know that there are timelines to get in the program, and when you get accepted. I don't know if that's available. You know, I know back when we applied, I think it was April, not applied, but we're considering it. I think it was around April. So I think that was the timeframe. So if you want to have the shared cost, we may have to wait that long, but I don't know. I'd have to look that up.
So by the time we get an RFP together, put it out the bid, and have it accepted, except a vendor, what are we talking about, March?
It could be quicker than that, but yes, probably around March. Because probably the timeline would be, in January, the Board would approve the RFP. It would go out. Probably would not have responses in time for them to make a decision in February. Maybe in time, we'll have to see what the schedule is, and at the very latest, March. But even if you hired them in February, they wouldn't get started until March.
So we'll, I guess we'll just move forward and do the best we can, and, you know, it's pretty clear what needs to be done. So we'll see how it goes. Maybe we won't need that consulting firm. Just kidding. Trying to lighten things up a little bit. I see there's a lot of frowns up there right now. And this is a serious issue, I understand that. So, but again, we'll convene, we have a January 15 scheduled meeting. I mean, we can move that up and start talking about this, and I guess we'll convene.
When are we meeting, I mean, besides the reorg, when are we meeting again? Are we meeting again in January?
Yes. So you have reorg on January 7, and then your regular meeting will be the 17.
Okay. I think that's what we should be targeting with respect to the professionals and whatever you guys come up with with respect to the evaluations.
Okay. Okay. At the end of that discussion? I think so. Thank God. All right. Next up is new business. Consider Authorization to Execute the Agreements with Flexible Benefit Administrators, Inc., Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you believe you're aware, we do have a health reimbursement account as a benefit to our employees. We have encountered issues over time with the current vendor. So this would be to execute agreement and go with a new vendor, one which is associated with Divot. I'd like to thank Megan for doing all the research on this. And that's for your consideration.
Awesome job, Megan.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Frescatour, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley, any further discussion, other than thank you, Megan? Any from the public? See you tonight, call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up is consider approval of capitalization policy. John McCrally, our finance director, is here to cover that. And Jack, I knew you had a question on this, so...
We're looking to propose a capitalization and depreciation policy. This would clarify and formalize our accounting treatment of capital assets. The policy does certain things. Basically, we are looking to have a policy because it's a generally accepted accounting principle requirement that we report our capital assets in our financial statements. The policy defines, first of all, what an asset is. An asset is tangible, an asset is used in the operation of the township. It has a useful life of longer than one year at least, and it is of significant value. So going further with the policy, it outlines capital asset classes. Classes meaning like land, buildings, vehicles, equipment. It establishes a capitalization threshold. A threshold is basically the value, like a dollar value, a minimum dollar value. And our policy is that generally, 5,000, at least 5,000, to be considered a capital asset. Infrastructure is a higher amount, it's 25,000. It establishes the estimated useful life, and it's generally in a range, like land improvements are 15 to 40 years. Vehicles, five to 10 years. Machinery and equipment are five to 20 years. And then we would determine that particular asset, what its useful life is, because then it gets calculated into the depreciation. Depreciation is straight-line depreciation. So if an asset is $100,000, it's five-year useful life, so you have $20,000 a year. So that's what our policy would do. And it is a best practice, it's recommended by Government Finance Officers.
We've never had this policy in place before.
It's not formally in place, no.
Never was. Not that we can find.
Historically, not that I can find. Not gonna find, right, exactly.
A lot going on tonight. Okay. So I'll ask for a motion to approve capitalization policy. So, Mr. Crowley, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Monroe, any further discussion? Other than thank you, John, for identifying this?
Thank you, John.
Okay.
Putting this in place. Any from the public? See you tonight, call the question, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The chair votes aye. John, stay right there, because you're...
Okay.
I want to ask you about the next one.
One more item, yeah.
Consider Approval of Major and Mastro Accounting Services Proposal for 2019.
The current agreement with Linda Major, Major and Mastro, is expiring December 31 of this year. So we're looking for, we have a revised proposal in front of the Board for accounting services in 2019. With the revised proposal, there would be, Finance Director, myself, and staff will assume some of the functions that had been previously and are currently performed by Major and Mastro. The new, the proposal would be for $19,000 less than what was previously budgeted. So, and then, just to give you an idea of some of the things that we would be taking on in-house, we would be preparing the monthly financial report, reconcile all cash accounts except the operating and payroll accounts. We would reconcile the escrow accounts, which I understand from Linda Major is a very time-consuming undertaking. We would be posting of the tax collections into the general ledger. We would prepare the PennDOT Actual and Planned Use Report. It's required yearly to get our liquid fuels funds. We would provide the accounting software implementation and training, which has really started this year. We would also do postage allocations and fuel allocations. These are all things that are done on a regular basis in finance. Right now, with the support of Major and Mastro, but we're gonna assume some of those responsibilities in-house. So that's it in a nutshell, then.
Okay, well, before I ask for action, I mean, so everyone knows, those of you that don't know Linda Major, she's been here as a consultant of ours for years and years, and I'm thrilled to have her stay here. Linda has vast institutional knowledge of our operation finances and...
She is very knowledgeable, and she really is an expert in municipal accounting.
And you've said it to me, and I couldn't agree more, that this is another set of eyes looking at our books as well. And I couldn't agree with that more.
Linda Major is a key part of our internal control, yes.
Exactly. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve Major and Mastro's Accounting Services Proposal for 2019. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Crowley, any further discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any from the public? See you tonight, call the question, all in favor? The chair votes aye, motion carries. You'll let Mr. Major know tomorrow, tell her we're glad to have her back.
Although, I just got to say, everything that you just said there with respect to Linda is exactly what we're talking about with the financial consultants. So it's fantastic for Linda, I think it's fantastic that we get these financial consultants in as well. I thought it was very, it was identical to what we were just saying.
All right, next up is Professionals Report, Township Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have my written report, in case there's any questions. Other than that, I just want to make note that we have a long-term employee retiring. George Buddy Mullin has been here for approximately 22 years. December 31 will be his last day. He has served in a variety of positions, and I just want to wish him well in his next phase.
And you want to talk about institutional knowledge. He will be sorely missed. He will.
Yep. That's all I have.
Anyone have anything for...
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Greg, and thank you, thank you, Buddy. I was gonna mention that supervisor's comment, but you covered it already. Thank you, Buddy. Solicitors Report, Mr. Bartol.
Yes, thank you. The Board has a copy of my written report, which was delivered last week, I believe. The written report is nine pages long. Included in there were several of the things that you went over this evening, including duty-to, the milled petition, the land development approvals, zoning, and the stormwater. So I think we've, I've spoken enough tonight and pretty much beat those to death already. If anybody has any questions with respect to any of those issues, I'd be happy to answer.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you. Engineers Report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have our December Engineers Report. The only comment I'd like to make is that you'll be seeing Planning Commission, and hopefully, the Board in January, early February, will be seeing the Wendy's Restaurant coming in at 813 County Line Road. That's the vacant pad site that was part of the original County View Properties Development, where you have residential on the back, and out front you have the CBS, the bank, and then there was a pad site. They got their relief from zoning, to allow the drive-through, and that pad's pretty much ready to go. So that'll go real quick.
I'm surprised that pad sat as long as it has with the amount of traffic flow through there.
Yeah, there was a lot of restrictions on it with the, that was under the old ordinance. We had productive staff meeting, they went through zoning, so you should see that probably. Planning Commission in January, and then the Board, you should see that in February.
Great, excellent. Anyone have anything for Mr. Ketter?
Thanks, Greg.
I mean, steak and shake.
Yeah.
Going crazy.
Yeah, everybody is.
Amanda, you might have some info on that?
Hopefully, they pass their UNO this week. I think they have, like, one or two things left, and then, at that point, they'll be able to start bringing the trainers in and ordering food for the restaurant. So hopefully, sometime in January, we'll see.
Sometime in January.
He's hoping the first week, but I, who knows?
Yeah, because I think Jim Boyle there broke the news, because I think everyone was waiting on the 17th, I think. And the next thing you know, on Warminster Live, it pops up.
Did break the news, and then I was able to email the developer that, like, five seconds after he broke the news, and find out what was going on.
Look at that, Jim. You're part of the government.
So thank you.
Any news on Lidl or Weiss?
Lidl, I would assume, is gonna resubmit sometime in the next few weeks. Last time I talked to them, it was supposed to come in soon, because they got the zoning approval for the new project. And Weiss, who knows?
But they still have to maintain those properties, correct?
Yeah, they're both still maintaining the properties.
The residents are asking, that's why, I just wanted to clarify.
Weiss, they're still funding their escrows, correct?
They still fund their escrows. Apparently, Bob spoke with their attorney about their bond sometime in November, and... They still fund the escrows. Apparently Bob spoke with their attorney about their bond sometime in November and, but nobody can get a date from them. So what's actually happening?
They're still funding the escrows, so that means on paper, they're still coming.
Yeah, they keep giving, pushing their escrow back to twenty-five hundred dollars every time they use a little bit of it, so.
And they maintain the properties too, so.
Yeah. It's a mystery.
Just curious. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is township manager announcement of upcoming agenda items.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have to announce is obviously reorganization will occur on January seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, all the letters, uh, and requests for appointment have been submitted to you. Uh, as we get others trickle in, we'll update the list and, and send those to you as well. Um, we did advertise a meeting for December twenty-seventh. Uh, that meeting was in the eventuality that you passed a budget, uh, that was in excess of fourteen mils and the court somehow denied, uh, or modified the request to exceed the millage. Of course, that's not gonna occur now with the budget you passed, so the December twenty-seventh meeting will be canceled.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Next up is the second round of public comment. Sure. Comment. Great. Okay, supervisors' comments. Ms. Frescatore.
Well, it's been a long, arduous meeting. I think we did make some progress and I hope, you know, hope and pray that we're going in the right direction. Find a permanent solution. Um, on a lighter note, I'd like to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas. I wish everybody, all the residents, my fellow supervisors, uh, staff, professionals, health, wealth and happiness in the new year. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Frescatore. Mr. Monroe.
Thank you. I, again, yeah, happy, uh, holidays and Merry Christmas to everybody, um, and a Happy New Year. Uh, I, I do wanna say, I mean, what I saw tonight, I mean, some people are gonna be happy, some people are gonna be mad. I mean, I saw five people come to an agreement. I mean, we don't talk about politics up here, but it was, there was bipartisanship. And with a path moving forward. And you know what? When you have a five-member board, you're not always gonna get an agreement and you shouldn't be. I don't think a five-member board on a routine basis, I mean, oftentimes the stuff that you see on this, we, we take motions and it's a five-o board on, on the simple stuff. But on, on the big stuff, it shouldn't be five-o. You should be openly discussing and, uh, and sometimes arguing, um, over some of these big issues. And, and I, I liked what I saw up here tonight and I do think that we made, uh, the right choice as long as we do the work for the next, uh, six months or however long it's gonna be. That's all that I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, I'd also like to wish everyone a happy holidays and Merry Christmas and, um, I couldn't agree more with Brian and Kathy. I think tonight we're, uh, we're on the path for a permanent fix, not, not a temporary fix and I'm looking forward to it. That's all I have.
Mr. Crowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just wanna take a moment to remember Betty Huff. Betty Huff, former Warmester resident, uh, longtime Centennial School Board member, uh, member of this community. Passed away recently, uh, in New Hampshire. Um, I only got to know Betty for the last five or six years when, when we were running together on the same ticket. And, uh, even, even then, uh, she was a feisty woman who, uh, who cared deeply about her communities and especially the children in her communities. She would, uh, she would constantly say to me, you know, when I ask her, why do you do the school board? Because the school board job is a difficult one. It's one that get, you know, supervisors don't get a lot of money. The, the, the school board members get no money. And they get a lot of grief. And she did it, she always said, it's always, it's all for the children. And I believed that and I thought she was a wonderful lady. I'm sad that I didn't get to know her longer. And I know members of this board have known her for years and she will be sorely missed. So, uh, rest in peace, Betty. And happy holidays and Merry Christmas to everyone. Have a Happy New Year and please be safe on the roads this holiday season.
And rest in peace with Betty too. I'm glad you brought that up. She was, she was tremendous woman. Uh, yeah, it was, it, it was a lively, entire discussion tonight. In going forward, Chris Allery, I expect to see you at every meeting because the next year is gonna be one hell of a year here. It is. It is. I'm very proud of the stances I took tonight because I chose to stand with the Warmester Police Department, the Warmester Fire Department. That's what I did tonight. And I'm proud to do that and I'll do that any day of the week. Other than that, I wanna wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I have one bit of good news. Uh, two weeks ago, I had a meeting with my cancer doctor. You know, this has been going on for years and he informed me that I no longer have to come see him anymore.
Awesome.
I hope my wife's not watching, but that was the best Christmas gift I could've got, so she, she may not shop for me if she, she hears that. So you can still go out and shop for me. And other than that, I'm gonna call for a motion with Jared.
So moved.
So, meeting Jared.